First, I want to announce that our chairman, Chairman Maniscalco, is traveling. And so he is not going to be in attendance today. He has an excused absence. And we have Councilman Carlson is not feeling well. He's under the weather, but he is attending the meeting virtually. You will see his smiling face, or maybe grumpy face this morning. I don't know which one is not feeling well when he speaks on the TV monitors. So if everybody would join me and rise for a moment of silence, please. Now join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to get a motion from council to allow Councilwoman Carlson to participate virtually. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak. A second from Councilman Rend. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Eyes have it. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you all.
I'd like to receive a motion filed to, I'm sorry, roll call first. District, roll call, please.
Carlson.
Here.
Hurtak.
Here.
Brandonis.
Here.
Henderson.
Present.
Vera, Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco. We have a fiscal call.
Thank you. Okay, let's make sure I've got multiple pages here to follow the script. So I'd like a motion for adoption of the minutes of the meeting held March 27, 2025.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Thank you. Okay, let's go through the agenda approval. I don't, we don't have any changes here.
You wanted to move ATU to May 15th. I'll do that for you.
Actually, that would be great. Thank you. We have a motion to move the ATU presentation of a commendation to May 15th. From Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilwoman Rend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, let's go through it. Nothing under the consent agenda. Anybody have any special requests, firm staff? Anybody need staff for any of the staff reports that we have under?
Thirty-four, yes.
We have requests for staff presentation for thirty-four. How about thirty-five? Hearing none?
No.
Thirty-six?
Yes, because I think there's a map that shows which things are going to be paved.
Okay, yes for staff on thirty-six.
Which, and thirty-seven matches.
And thirty-seven as well. Thirty-eight.
That's Bill.
Bill, as for Mobility Department, would you like staff present for that? Excuse me, Councilman Carlson.
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, so no staff.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney.
Mr. Shelby.
That's, that is a quarterly update, a five-minute quarterly update, and it's now scheduled for the next quarterly update. But if it's council's pleasure to not have to have that appearance, that could be converted to a written memo and not have it on the agenda.
I think we'll leave that till when Councilwoman can make a motion next, when he's here, present, and maybe talk about it when he's here.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty-nine, yes.
Thirty-nine, yes. Okay, we have on.
Forty, yes.
Forty, yes.
Forty-one, yes.
Forty-one, yes.
And then forty-two, yes.
And forty-two, yes. Okay, so then we'll talk about the written reports when we get to those. And that looks there. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, let's kick, let's see, Councilmember Vera is here. Good, welcome. Show for the record, Councilmember Vera is here battling the traffic on 275 from New Tampa. Very good. We're going to start off with item one from Councilwoman Miranda.
Morning, Council. It's my pleasure here to do the Officer of the Month for Officer Travis Johnson, who is here. I know we have Dr. Chief Burkhaw, who's here to talk about this officer. We always do honor our first responders here to reflect the values of the community that we serve when it comes to our police officers and our firefighters. So Chief, if you'd like to go. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Officer Travis Johnson exemplifies the values of the Tampa Police Department through his exceptional leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to both his role and the community he serves. He consistently goes above and beyond in every aspect of his work. So he's a field training officer, and if you don't know what that is, after a police officer goes to the academy, six months in the academy, then they do our in-house training for another 10 weeks, and then they're assigned to field training officer. And being a field training officer myself, there's a lot of pride, and there's also a lot of frustration in that job. So it's difficult to find a great candidate, and you're going to hear today how exceptional he is in this role. So for the past year, Officer Johnson has served as a field training officer in District Two, where he has proven to be an outstanding mentor, helping to shape and guide our new officers. Training new recruits typically impacts an officer's personal productivity, but Officer Johnson consistently defies this challenge. He not only excels in his training duties, but he also leads his squad in arrest, proactive policing efforts, and responding to calls for service. His dedication is clearly demonstrated through his willingness to consistently exceed expectations, frequently making impactful arrests even at the end of the shift, often requiring him to stay late. One notable example occurred while he was on proactive patrol while training a new police officer. Officer Johnson's instincts led him to observe suspicious activity, which prompted a search that uncovered illegal narcotics and a weapon. A subsequent records check revealed the defendant had 10 prior felony convictions, making his possession of a firearm even more serious. For making impactful arrests just before the end of his shift to successfully mentoring new officers, Officer Johnson has shown an unwavering commitment to reducing crime and enhancing public safety. His proactive policing, attention to detail, and ability to handle challenging situations make him an outstanding field training officer for the Tampa Police Department, and this is why he is receiving our Officer of the Month for April. So congratulations, Officer.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. So Officer, before we formally honor you, there's some good folks here from the community who'd like to honor you. So go ahead, Brandon.
Congratulations. Councilman Brandon Barclay, Tampa PVA. We're going to present you with this placard. Job well done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Mary Lou Bailey.
Nice to meet you, Mary.
I'm Markany with the Zoo.
Yeah, we're here on behalf of the Zoo Tampa. We want to congratulate you. I love hearing about the TOs. At some of these meetings in the past, I've confessed that I'm kind of a junkie for the show with the rookie.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, are you like Bradford, or are you like a hard case, or?
No, no.
No, okay. Anyway, congratulations. Thank you for everybody who serves. You guys are all awesome and well-deserved. We've presented you with some goodies, but most importantly, there's an annual membership to the zoo for you and your family.
Thank you very much.
I hope you enjoy it and good health.
Thank you. And we've got, we've got a flying fox here, which is actually the world's largest species of bat, which is an homage to Batman, another great pound fighter.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Officer Johnson. I'm Grace Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the Gonsmore family and the 1905 family of restaurants. We want to thank you so much for your dedication to the city of Tampa and our community. Thank you to your loved ones. We want to present you with this gift card to visit any of our restaurants, the Colombian, Ebor, Ulealean Tampa Heights, Joy Flamingo Show, Casa Santo Stefano, Fresh Made Pasta. Thank you so much for all that you do, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Officer. I'm Mary Dillon from the Stradis Center for the Performing Arts. On behalf of the Stradis Center, thank you for your service and congratulations on this wonderful honor. Please accept performance tickets to an upcoming show for you and your family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good morning, Council. Jill Watecki from Tampa Theater. Thank you so much for what you do, for being a role model for the next generation coming up. And on behalf of the theater, we'd like to present you with an annual membership for two, to come see us at our movie palace down the road.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Chief.
Officer Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, our family. Amazing story. And on behalf of the Glazer family, our entire organization, we have a little tradition at one buck. Anybody that goes over to Tampa, it's a game ball. And hearing your story, we've got a custom game ball for you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do and all your sacrifice and support to make Tampa the great community that it is. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Officer Johnson. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you for supporting Officer Johnson. You protect our streets, make us safer, and you're such a mentor. I'm Lori Osborne, and I work for the Florida Orchestra. And on behalf of the Florida Orchestra, we would like to invite you and your family to attend an upcoming concert of your choice. And again, we just thank you so much and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Counselor, good morning. Leo Gary, Jason Binder. On behalf of Bill Crefort, I want to congratulate you on winning this award. Thank you so much for everything that you do, Travis. And like I say every single time, I appreciate and respect each and every one of you guys that puts that uniform on every single day and make these sacrifices for all of us in here. On behalf of Jennifer Curry, a handwritten letter with a gift code and then a full free maintenance on your personal vehicle, and then here's some goodies inside.
Appreciate it.
Take these, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service, thank you.
When you all speak, if you face the podium, that's where the microphone is hidden, believe it or not, there's a microphone in there, then everybody, including those folks at home, can hear you.
Morning, Council. My brother, Steps Towing's service, and congratulations on a job well done, Officer. And on behalf of Todd Step and Steps Towing, like we've got a few gift cards here, Starbucks, Longhorn, Jimmy John's, and Go Local Tampa gift card. So go out and take some time off, you deserve it. Thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you, guys.
And enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Good morning, Officer. Meredith Williams from Friends of the Tampa River Walk. Want to thank you for all that you do and to memorialize the service and your commitment to our community. We would like to present you with a paver along the Tampa River Walk with your name engraved. Probably get engraved in about a month or two. In addition, there are some of our members who were not able to attend but also wanted to honor your service. So I have a dinner for two aboard yacht Starship, two complimentary passes to Lost Pearl, two complimentary all-day passes to Pirate Water Taxi, two complimentary one-hour rentals to Riverwalk Rentals, an adult party for 12 at Splitsville, and $200 gift certificate to Florida Avenue Shopping.
Thank you so much.
So thank you again.
Casey Olson, Health Services. Thank you for everything you're doing for our service, and we can't thank you enough. Gift card for Evening Hotel Hyatt in Ebor City. You guys enjoy that, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations. I'm Christina Billas from Oxford Commons. We would love for you to come to our restaurants, Oxford Chains, Mottox, The Newer, One, The Library, and Prudalina, and thank you again for what you do for the community. Thank you again.
Good morning.
Good morning. Congratulations. I see you got a tote bag. You got a couple tote bags. So you got the plaques, you got the gift certificates.
I need some of wheels, maybe.
Yeah, you need one of those luggage carriers, you know. I'm Steve McElhenney. On behalf of a couple of different folks, we're going to recognize you and provide you with gift certificates. And I'm reminded that every new recruit starts in the police department with the first step. And it's the first step, it's the commitment to serve and to protect. And so we're very proud of you for engaging and keeping those folks in the right path and keeping our police department to be one of the finest in the country. On behalf of the Chicho Restaurant Group, we're providing you with a gift certificate. You can enjoy yourself over there for breakfast, lunch, or dinner. On behalf of the Meat Market in Old Hyde Park, we're providing you with another gift certificate. Enjoy yourself for lunch or dinner. On behalf of Bella Brava in the Midtown section, your choice, lunch or dinner. And Yummy House China Bistro, your choice, lunch or dinner. This is the one the chief likes to go to. And Jackson's Bistro on Harbor Island, we're providing you with another gift certificate. So congratulations and thank you for your service and thank you for your dedication to these officers.
Thank you.
And on behalf of a grateful city of Tampa and Tampa City Council Officer, we're very proud to give you and your family this Tampa City Council Commendation. There you go, sir. Thank you, man. God bless you, sir. Thank you. And if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Council, and everyone that's here, command staff. First off, I want to thank my newly fiance, Zuzel. She does, she does a lot picking up the slack at home. We've got a little one that's out of the crib now, so he's, he's in everything, he's in every cabinet we got. So usually there's somebody behind the scenes at my house. And also, the squad that I'm on, you know, I feel a little bit of guilt taking this because we got such a good squad. And anytime we're doing proactive work on that FTO squad, there's always, there's always somebody picking up the slack with the calls or, you know, helping me out. So although it's an individual award, those guys know how much I appreciate them, and if not, I hope they do. And, you know, it's, it's a team effort for sure. And thank you, guys, for all the gifts. A little overwhelming, but I do appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Officer. On behalf of our chairman, Maniscalco, who's not here today, and the rest of our Tampa City Council, we'd like to thank you very much for your service to the city of Tampa. And as you said, you know, it's part of a team effort, and I think the city of Tampa is so proud to have so many amazing first responders and folks that keep us safe every day. But the city of Tampa is an amazing city because of officers like you and your brothers and sisters in the Tampa PD that provide for our safety and security. So thank you so much. Congratulations on the wedding and have a beautiful day. Enjoy, enjoy all those nights out. What a great way to celebrate your, your, your coming up wedding. And enjoy the zoo with the flying fox. We like that. Very good. Take care.
Thank you.
Councilman Miranda, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to be here this morning to present a Water Conservation Month Award to the city of Tampa. This is a statewide day that we say that what we have in water and what we don't need and what we're going to have to serve the public of this great city of Tampa. It is my pleasure to have Mr. Rory Jones, the head of the department, and behind him is Mr. Brad Baer, who's the super chief of a couple of departments. And then you have the people who really do the work behind the department. So we've got all three of the components here today. In recognition of the 27th Annual Water Conservation Month, its celebrator on April, we, the City Council of the city of Tampa, Florida, calling each citizen in business to help protect our precious water resources and practicing water conservation. And I'm going to have Mr. Jones speak on that in a minute and about other things that the Water Department does that we don't realize. In fact, I'd really like to push the administration to show the public what we have, not only in water, but in, when you go into what they do in the tertiary treatment plant and what they do in all the department that turns garbage into energy, which serves about 15,000 homes in the city of Tampa on a daily basis. So I don't think they heard me, but I looked at him and said it again. Thank you. He said he got me. But it's, it's a thing that we have, an asset that we have in the city, that very few can recognize what we're doing on a daily basis. And it's my pleasure to have Mr. Jones come up and speak about water, what it means, and how they do and what they're doing at the Water Department. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, thank you. Well, I do have a humble brag here that's coming up, so. Good morning, Council. Rory Jones with the Water Department. Thank you for, for the commendation and the continued support. You know, it's an honor to be here in recognition of Water Conservation Month. Water is one of our most precious resources, and it's quickly becoming the future gold. You know, we can't live without it. We must protect it, and that's what this group behind us does a great job. Humble brag coming up here. The choices we make on a daily basis, whether it's fixing a leak, watering less, using more efficient fixtures, really preserves this resource for our families, the future city, the future generations. The, the conservation efforts doesn't need to be hard. It's, each small thing together can, can make a huge impact. And one of the biggest examples of that is the one-day-per-week watering restriction. And thank you for your support and the community's adaptation to this. With that policy in place, we saved over 2 billion gallons of water last year. That's, that's 2 billion gallons of water that we didn't pump, we didn't treat, you know, we didn't pay for. It just shows you what's possible when we work together. And, sorry, I'm checking my notes, making sure I'm hitting everything here. Also, you know, here's the humble brag. Wanted to really showcase the quiet workforce behind the scenes. This team, and I'm going to bring up, bring up a visual here. Let's see if you can see that. Will it sharpen? Okay. You know, the conservation team behind me here, they've been out here every day, working with customers, distributing water-saving kits, educating the public, you know, doing the one-on-one evaluations with the irrigation evaluations. Their efforts have led Tampa to be the number one conservation member government in the air, in the region. They've contributed over half of the water savings to the Tampa Bay Water Rebate Program. And, you know, that's not just good numbers, that's, that's, that's impact. That's meaningful impact that, that this team has. And now, instead of me going on too long about all the programs, I really wanted to hand it over to, to this team that truly makes it happen. They are the heart of conservation effort, the conservation team. Under the Planning Manager, Sarah Burns, Ryan Smith, Tony Torres, Eliana Hernandez, Justin Nguyen, and Julia Palashak. And let me hand it over to you to maybe dive in some of the details here.
All right. Thank you, Rory. Good morning, Council. And, you know, Rory points out that water conservation- And, you know, Rory points out that water conservation is truly a collaborative effort. We, we love the recognition, we appreciate that you're listening to words about water conservation this morning, but the, the bottom line is, it takes individual-
For the record, can you state your name? I know he said it, but, you know, it's gonna, we just have to keep the record straight.
Julia Palaszczuk, City of Tampa Water Department. And so, I get very excited when I'm talking about water. And our whole team, we love to talk about water, but again, recognizing today the individual actions of our community that lead us to be leaders in water savings. So, collaborating with our colleagues at Tampa Bay Water Wise through those multifamily retrofits. We have a great inventory of older apartment buildings, and so, the retrofit brings water use into focus immediately. And so, we're happy to offer those rebates in collaboration with Water Wise and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. So, we're working closely together every day. And the district has chosen a theme for this year's Water Conservation Month, and that is outdoor water use through automatic irrigation. And most of our work, one-on-one with our irrigating community. And we can save thousands of gallons a month with each of those customers who come to us asking for that help. We have a lot of events coming up in Water Conservation Month. I counted 17 events that we'll be at, from the airport to schools to USF and just out in the community, you know, sharing our knowledge and resources. Finally, I want to recognize those single-family homes who have been efficient year after year after year, entire neighborhoods with that single-digit water use every month. Without those families, doing what's necessary to maintain a low utility bill and raise their families, without those efficient neighborhoods and families, we would not be able to welcome new families and new businesses into our growing city. So, it all depends on our individuals, and thank you very much.
Thank you.[740.88][740.88][applause]
And again, we, we take it for granted because you opened the file, what's there? Water. This water's 300, 400 million, same water that was going on Earth for 300, 400 million years. However, the scarcity, just to give you a little example, and I don't want to take too much time, I know the council is under pressure to do things. When you look at what we've done with the 82 million gallons a day, that's what we can average year-round on the water we buy by Swip Bud. Not too many years ago, we had 250,000 people living here. Now, we have over 420,000 people living here. Not only that, we taking care of part of the, our great Hillsborough County area because our lines were, and the legislature years back asked us if we could extend it. And so, those customers, with the same 82 million gallons a day, we are now serving, and I hope I'm correct, over 700,000 individuals that live in the City of Tampa. So, what these group, this group right here of six or seven, eight, they've done a yeoman's job in making sure that the public understands the need for them to conserve water. And I really appreciate the work that they've done, I know all council members also, but I appreciate very much for allowing it this time because without water, we can't live. And the reservoir that we have only holds 1.2 billion gallons, right around there?
Yeah.
And that's enough water for about 18 days. However, back two or three administrations ago, under the Greco administration, we did, done eight wells, I believe, for what's called, we treat the water, put it down back in the aquifer, and then, we pull it out during the month of January, February, and March, when we have little water, eight or 10 million gallons a day, to get us through the what? The season when there's very little rain. So, everything here is uncalculated and past history, and it's worked very well because of these individuals behind me. And I appreciate your time, council members, and any questions you'd like to ask the group, you're welcome.
Councilwoman Herta.
Congratulations, and this is very timely because this week, I just did a tour of the Water Department again, which is really amazing. And if you haven't done it, I highly recommend it because there's a lot of new stuff that's going in. And, and then, I also just got a report about the sixth pilot, which was also very good and interesting. So, I just wanted to say, and, and they took me on the dam. If you haven't been, biggest turtles I've ever seen. But, just, we're, we're so lucky to have such a phenomenal utility such as our Water Department. So, I just wanted to say congratulations and I appreciate all the work you're doing. And I'll be honest with you, I've never thought about people who have double-digit water because I don't think I've ever gotten there. But again, I mean, we, we try to conserve, but I think that's a really good goal. I really like the way you phrased that because I had never really thought about it in single digits. So, I will certainly be taking that message and sharing it. So, I do appreciate that. And if you have lists of places you're going to be, I, we get your newsletter, but if you have that list, don't, feel free to share it with us if we have the opportunity to stop by. It's always nice to have it in our, in our hands. So, thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming to council today and let, I just want you to know that this is one day we honor you, but really, it's 365 days a year. This is a very appreciative council. And I know, you know, we see these, these two guys over here on the end, you know, a lot, but, you know, it's nice to see the rest of the team here before council. And know that with Charlie Miranda, you'll always have a champion for water at, at the City of Tampa. I mean, I think, I think he, he sleeps, eats, drinks, I mean, just water, dreams, dreams about water. I mean, he's, he's definitely passionate and is, is one of your biggest allies in, in local government. But thank you all so much for what you do. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I've got to make the presentation here, Rory Jones.
Thank you.
Thanks again for everything you've done, you and your whole group, and water, and the whole City of Tampa runs on water because you guys produce it, take care of it, and distribute it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.[993.01][993.01][applause]
Thank you. Very good.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Is Martin Miranda on?
Um, yeah. Right? Oh, yeah, let's, let's go, this guy, Martin, Mr. Shelby.
Yes, sir.
You want to go ahead and do the rules?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, good morning. Members of the public, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Very briefly, the public comment, rules of decorum for the conduct of today's meeting. The general public comment cards have been available outside. Those who have wished to speak should have filled out a speaker card and have placed it in the box, one card per speaker. Each person submitting a card will be recognized by name by the Chair Pro Tem to approach and speak. A three-minute time limit applies. And please print legibly because names that cannot be read will not be called. If you're here to speak at the two items that are set for public hearing on today's agenda, you don't have to fill out a card, just have to put your name on the sheet that's at the podium outside. If you need any assistance, please see the city staff. Now, members of the public are allowed a reasonable time at the beginning of today's meeting to address any item on the agenda before the City Council takes official action on the item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. And speakers and member of the, members of the public are also reminded that they are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds or displaying signs or graphics. Speakers are also reminded to refrain from making personal attacks against any city official, staff member, or any other member of the public. The Chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the City Council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the council rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the Chair, may be removed from the chamber for the remainder of today's meeting. Finally, City Council members should remember, please, to refrain from engaging a speaker during public comment. And the public should be aware that the City Council does not take questions or have a dialogue during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Okay, we will start with public comment virtually first, so Michael Randolph.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Randolph.
My name is Michael Randolph, and I'm with the West Tampa CDC. I want to talk today about our upcoming business workshop for the swing and summer session. The first workshop is called Underlying Understanding Lenders and Investors. It includes key factors lenders and investors look for, strategies to secure funding, and common mistakes, and how to avoid them. The second workshop is Marketing and Sales 101. It includes understanding our target market, effective marketing strategies, and tips for successful sales conversion. The fourth, the, the third workshop is Starting an E-Commerce and Home-Based Business. It includes benefits of home-based e-commerce, step-by-step guides to setting up, and challenges, and solutions. As you know, one of the first fastest-growing businesses is e-commerce and home-based businesses. The fourth workshop is Using Artificial Intelligence to Grow Your Business. It includes how artificial intelligence can enhance business efficiency, tools, technology for artificial driven business growth, and real-world success stories. In a recent article by MacKenzie Institute for Economic Development, and I quote, "While the technology has potential to widen the racial gap, it is also possible to shepherd this new technology in an inclusive way that not only yield equitable benefits for blacks in marginalized communities, but also to accelerate the closure of the, of the racial gap." And the final workshop is Loan Application and Finance Report. Importance, and this includes importance of detailed application, applications, how to create effective financial reports, and best practices for businesses and finances. These workshops are valuable, invaluable knowledge to, to entrepreneurs and professional businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Ms. Rodriguez, are you online?
Yes, I am, Councilman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. How are you guys? So, I'm, I'm speaking on the parcel for sale, Showman's Rest parcel on Woodlawn Cemetery. Yesterday, I spoke with John Persia. He has overseen Showman's Rest for the past 17 years. He makes all final decisions on behalf of the LLC that owns Showman's Rest. They're struggling financially. He said they had to take an $80,000 loan out for much-needed repairs. He also mentioned that multiple people have viewed the parcel. One lady is very interested in purchasing it. Last night, I sent council an email with supporting documentation along with contact info for John Persia and the Realtor as well. As I said, John Persia represents and makes all the final decisions regarding Showman's Rest. He told the Realtor, Ron Batten, to sell it with conditions. Only one home is to be built, and the buyer cannot ask for rezoning. So, this is a time-sensitive matter. It cannot wait until after May 8th, the meeting that will address admin being overwhelmed with so many motions. Every motion is important, and perhaps the city can hire more staff so the community is not on hold until May the 8th. Woodlawn has been a cemetery for 137 years, and many who built this city are buried there. And although the City of Tampa is not, quote, "in the cemetery business," it should be obligated to perpetually preserve our history. And that would include our cemeteries, past and present. So, please consider purchasing the parcel. Don't let history repeat itself. And I also want you to know that it was Henry Chezabal Senior who was the one who just thought it would be a great idea if the city were to purchase it. Because he said he's tired of hearing it come up over and over, and, and a lot of us are, we don't have the wherewithal to go through another long, nasty, lengthy fight with the owners of the property. So, with that said, I'm hoping one of the council members will propose a motion before May 8th to, to, for the city to consider buying that parcel. Thank you, Council. Have a great day.
Thank you. Good day. Okay, we're going to go to in-person. The next first person is, I can't read it, I believe it's Tony Daniels.
And tis not Tampa, Florida. Like you said, huru, huru means freedom in Swahili. So, we as African people should always be thinking about our freedom, every day and in every way. What I'm here to talk about is freedom from child support. I want to say to this City Council that child support, if you've never heard it before, started on Saturday, January 4th, 1975, handed over from Richard Nixon to Gerald Ford, handed down from Franklin Delano Roosevelt with the Social Security Title IV operation that was racist, racist to its core. All the alphabet soup programs, racist to its core, handed over to Richard Nixon and handed over to Gerald Ford, and started up the Title IVD Child Support Program, which is a replacement program. For those who know what replacement is, for those who know what final solution is, it's an ethnic cleansing program that's being paraded as a child support enforcement and collection program. It's a big snitching program. Black people complain about people not snitching because somebody shot somebody or somebody stole something or boosted merchandise. Ain't no problem with that. The biggest snitching program in America is a child support program that causes African women, mostly African women, to snitch on African men, on their baby daddies. It's a snitching program. And the program is so serious. God works in mysterious ways because they put the right people, God would put the right person in contact with the right situation. This is a summons that I allegedly received in reference to child support in 2015, or in 2014. Never received it. Never received it. Father, all kind of complaints, United Nations, President, President Obama, President, uh, Trump, President Biden, the United Nations, various people, the United States Justice Department, the, the Florida Supreme Court, Pam Bundy, other places, nothing happened. Sheriff's Department, Tampa City Council, Hillsborough County Commission, nothing happens. Here's why I'm telling the hearing officer, I've never been served. This is documented. Well, I've never been served, know nothing about this child support. Here's where Judge, Judge Jared Smith banned me from filing any motions within the Hillsborough County Clerk of the Circuit Court because I'm saying I've never been served. I don't know about this thing. But many black men is experiencing this, and that's ruining black families.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Do something about it.
Our next speaker is Ms. Carol Anne Bennett. Good morning, Ms. Bennett.
Hi, my name is Carol Anne Bennett. There's some problems with the VRB appointments. The two people who are applying today, one of whom I don't know, but I'm sure she'll be wonderful, she's applying for a vacant alternate position. The other one is currently serving on the VRB as an alternate, and that position expires this year. He's a, I think he's eminently qualified. I would love to see him continue to serve on the VRB. He's very reliable. I, I go to the VRB a lot, and he's always there. So, I would love to see him to continue to serve on the VRB. My problem is that the code says that you, that the terms are four years, and you can be appointed for a second consecutive term, but after two consecutive terms, you're not eligible for reappointment until a calendar year has elapsed. So, basically, you're supposed to serve on the VRB for a maximum of eight years, take a year off before you come back. And again, like, I would love to see these, I understand that Ms., Mr. Murphy is currently in an alternate position. Because the VRB positions are so hard to fill, he's there every single month because there's always vacancies. And so, what he's doing is sliding over from an alternate position to a regular position. Wonderful. Great. Love, love to hear it. The problem is the expiration dates don't align, and all I'm asking is that that be fixed. The current alternate term that he's in expires in 2025. The term that he's sliding into is to fulfill someone who- The term that he's sliding into is to fulfill someone who resigned, but her position doesn't expire till twenty twenty-seven. So if he re-appeals for a second consecutive term, and I hope he does, it'll be from twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty-one, which adds two years, it becomes a ten-year term, which is not obviously the intent of the code. So again, I would love for Mr. Murphy to slide over, um, and continue to serve. I hope he applies for a second consecutive, uh, a second term. I would just like to see the expiration dates fixed. Um, the VRB website is very bad. I spoke to Chief Bennett about it today, I think we're gonna get it fixed. If you Google City of Tampa VRB, you cannot find out what's vacancy. You have to Google boards and commissions, no one knows to do that. Six months ago, the four positions that you all appoint were all vacant. I bet none of you knew that. So you guys need to be kept better informed on what vacancies exist, because I'm sure you all know people who would be great, um, people to serve on the board, and we always need people, there's always vacancies. So, um, if you could just fix the expiration dates, and then please confirm, um, both of the applicants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay, we have, it says here Pointer. I guess it's like Cher or Beyonce, just Pointer.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. It's implied. Um, I, I'd like to say that I went with Councilwoman Hurtak on the tour of the water company. I toured the wastewater company with Carol Anne about three or four months ago. Everybody should do those tours, absolutely, uh, to see the rock stars that are running those departments. Um, and I really, really want to talk about number thirty-four, which is the Ashley Drive Project. I think it should be one hundred percent funded out of the CRA. If you're gonna tell me, oh, well, we've spent all those funds, thirty percent on affordable housing, well, guess what? That affordable housing money hasn't been spent. If you want this done, do it out of their funds. The general fund should not be paying for upgrades within CRAs because there's plenty of money in there. You guys gave them two million dollars to spruce up Franklin Street a couple months ago, which was really offensive to me because I can't get anything done in my community, but yet there's money spraying all over the place downtown and Channel Side. So, you know, I, I find it very, very offensive that this project was ten million dollars to start, now it's twenty-two million. And I know that the person who put together this project intended that it all come out of the CRA. I know that for a fact, okay? The city of Tampa pays through the nose for their leases. Sixty-eight thousand dollars a month we pay to the GTE building. But yet, um, this lease for twenty-three oh, uh, oh-two West Cherry Street, which is a vacant lot, which somebody parks on, has not had an increase since twenty twenty. So you find me something else that you can go to Walmart, Kmart, any place in this city and find that you're still paying the same price for it you paid for it in twenty twenty. It doesn't happen unless you're the city of Tampa, and we never raise prices for anything. We had to pay staff to renew that lease, but yet we didn't put a three percent clause in there. If we had raised it every year, I think it would be about, uh, it would be up around, like, three seventy-five a month or something like that. I think it's ridiculous that we don't have those kind of, uh, those kind of things set in place. Um, there's a handful of items attached to the agenda on Monday, and I wrote it in my agenda review, that did not have anything in on base and mysteriously between Monday and now. And normally, I read the agendas on the weekends. It's my understanding they're supposed to be in there on the Friday before. But yet, today, miraculously, those staff reports are in the, in, on base. They're supposed to be there last Friday. Um, you know, I, I know our staff works really, really, really hard, but you know what? I don't have to in three days a week to go back and reread things. And it makes it hard for you guys. And I know some of you don't read the agendas till Tuesday or Wednesday because they change so much, you don't know what's gonna be on there, and you don't wanna feel like you're wasting your time. That's not how we should be doing business. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, right up front, Robin Lockett.
Good morning, good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Yellow Jackets, Yellow Jackets, Yellow Jackets. Still want an answer, uh, still want a building, uh, please provide a status. Uh, February the twentieth, there was a great conversation. You guys all agreed that, hey, whatever it takes, you're gonna make the Yellow Jackets whole. What makes Yellow Jackets whole is a building. Whether somebody identified, uh, whether it's in writing or not in writing. It was a handshake, and they were told that they were gonna be made whole. So please, provide a status, let, let me know what's going on. And, uh, let's get this building built and the Yellow Jackets up before something happens to Pa- uh, to, uh, Coach Wright. That's my goal. He's getting older, and I would like for him to see that what he's asking for is done before he, uh, something happens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment, and we will move on to board administration appointments with our wonderful clerk, City Clerk Shirley Fox Knowles. Ms. Knowles, floor is yours.
Good morning, Council, Shirley Fox Knowles, City Clerk. I'm here to present the applicants for the vacancies on the variance review board, uh, Mr. Aaron Murphy and Ms. Megan Cochran.
So, listen, good morning, both of you. Thank you very much for your applications. If you would like to present, you have the opportunity to have three minutes each if you'd like to say anything on your behalf.
Um, sure, Aaron Murphy. Uh, I've been sitting on the variance review board for, going on four years now. I actually was with, uh, Ms. Hurtak when I first joined the board. Um, I have enjoyed my time up there, and I, uh, hopefully look forward to serving the residents of City of Tampa for a little bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Cochran?
Good morning, City Council. As a resident of East Tampa and an advocate for equitable-
Can you say your name for us, I'm sorry?
Oh, Megan Cochran.
Thank you.
As a resident of East Tampa and an advocate for equitable community development, I am, I am eager to contribute my voice and perspective to the variancey review board. My commitment to this role stems from a deep understanding of unique challenges facing residents in low-income areas, particularly, um, rezoning and land use and la- landscape regulations. Landscape regulations. I bring to this position a willingness to listen, learn, and collaborate in a strong desire to advocate for a solution that balance the needs of property owners with the border interests of Tampa's communities. As a board member, I, I aim to work diligently to uphold the principles for fairness and contribute to a shared vision of a collaborative, vibrant, thriving city for all. Thank you for considering my application. I am passionate about making a difference, and I would be honored to serve on the rev- variancey review board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Ms. Shirley Fox Knowles, uh, is a, just a motion from Council sufficient for what you need today?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we will look into, um, IT working with us to, uh, get it straight on the appointments as far as, uh, what's on the, uh, application.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Miranda?
If I may, regarding what Ms. Knowles just spoke about, I received an email this morning, I'm sure all of us have, but I just saw it accidentally when I was putting the items together. And I asked my head to give it to, uh, the city council attorney and Mr. Shelby, and I, I'm sure he hasn't had time to review it, because I just handed it to him thirty minutes ago, whatever. And I, I don't have anything for or against anyone, but I wanna make sure that we do the right thing the first time and make sure that we're in the confines of the law. I don't want any intent going awry and saying that we did something without having it checked out legally, so that's what I'm doing. I'm not trying to stop it, but, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Miranda. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, I did have an opportunity to, uh, see the email, and I have spoke to Ms. Bennett this morning, and I have forwarded the email to the legal department. Susan Johnson Velez is aware of that. So Council, what I'd ask you to do is, um, with the, um, uh, understanding of, uh, of the members, uh, excuse me, the applicants, that you do, uh, make a decision as to whether to appoint them to their respective positions. And, uh, with regard to Mr. Murphy's exact term, uh, we will work that out and we'll keep him informed, and I will ask that you, um, include your motion for me to come back with a resolution, and then you'll be able to see how the case is resolved and, uh, and formalize the appointment. But as of today, you could choose to, um, to make your decisions.
Councilwoman Hurts, that vote, it's fair.
If it's all right, I move the, go on.
Yeah, uh, you can, I, I'm confused. I didn't see the email, 'cause I was, I guess I was already here, so I'm not really sure what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, do you just wanna, like, what, what is going on?
The issue, the issue, the issue is Mr. Murphy has been serving-
Oh.
On the VRB-
Okay, okay.
As an alternate, and now he is, has the opportunity-
Okay.
Because of a resignation to move into a-
So that just wasn't clear to us that, that this is what you were talking about? I didn't know if it was some sort of, like, okay.
It's a matter of just logistics.
That, that makes sense, okay, thank you. Then it's a logistical thing, we can deal with it later. But, um, I just wanted to say that I did enjoy, uh, working with Mr. Murphy. He was on briefly while I was still on the VRB. And, um, I look forward to, um, um, to Ms. Cochran joining the board and learning. It's a really fascinating board, you'll learn a lot. And I just want you to remember one very, very important term, and that is competent substantial evidence. Uh, you'll learn a lot about competent substantial evidence. Um, VRB is a lot more, uh, black and white, not as much gray. So it's a really great place to learn about the city and about land use. And I, um, it's, it's, I'm, I'm excited for you because land use is one of my favorite things. So I think you'll really enjoy yourselves. And, uh, yeah, so I'll, um, I'll let Mr.-
I just moved the nomination.
Yeah, I'll second.
Or both.
We, we have, we have a motion and a second, uh, from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak, uh, but I believe our, Marty Shelby-
Let's do that separately.
Should we do that separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak to accept then, uh, the nominations for the variance review board for Aaron Murphy and Megan Cochran. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Okay, would somebody like to move the motion?
Mr. Shelby, could you just state what you want that motion to be?
Oh, just, just the mo- the mo- council moves to appoint, uh-
We already did that.
The candidates, respect, but just for me to come back with resolutions.
So move for Mr. Shelby to come back-
Come back with resolutions clarifying the length of term?
Or the, the, uh, the point, the dates of appointment.
I thought this was a, okay, clarifying that, sure. Yeah, I, I moved that Mr. Shelby come back clarifying the dates of appointment. And I, I don't know that it's in our purview to move those dates. I don't know if that's an administrative function or a council function.
It's a function of the code as interpreted, and I will work with the legal department.
Wonderful, okay.
But certainly, um, it's, uh, it's council's intent to have these, um, members of the community start their service as soon as possible.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So I would come back, it's my earliest opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak having Attorney Marty Shelby return to council with a resolution confirming the appointments and with clarifications. And we have a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shelby?
Uh, because of the fact that Councilmember Carlson is appearing remotely, um, all of your votes today therefore have to be voice votes to be able to have his vote register.
Voice votes, okay.
Voice votes.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, guys, thank you.
Okay, does that, does that have to be roll call if it's not leg- if it's not legislative? If it's something like this, is it?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't?
Well, yes, because a lot of legislative things are multi-million dollar contracts.
Okay, okay, very good. Would you like us to repeat that one?
Yeah.
Okay, for practice, we'll repeat that vote. Okay, so for, for clarification, because we have a councilperson that is participating remotely, uh, we have been told that every vote needs to be a-
A voice vote.
Roll call, voice vol, vote roy- roll call, voice vote. So we are going to start that off. Ms. Clerk?
Carlson? You're muted.
You're muted.
Microphone?
He's muted.
Carlson?
Still muted.
Uh, yes, and thank you guys for accommodating me. It's better than you guys getting sick.
You're one hundred percent.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Fox Knowles, we have another one? Are you doing the next one? Okay, very good, okay.
I'll move the resolution.
Okay, so this is, uh, we are going, we have a motion to move file number BA twenty-five, uh, third, one-three-one-five-five-
Second.
Confirming the, uh, appointment for the Architectural Review Commission. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor? Obvious, excuse me, roll call vote.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk. No clicking fingers. Okay, very good. So now we move on to, we have no request for public reconsiderations. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, so, uh, Public Safety Committee, Louis Vera?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I move, um, items six and seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilwoman Vera, sorry, Councilwoman Miranda?
Roll call vote?
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Neighborhood and Community Affairs?
Yes, sir, Neighborhood and Community Affairs, I move items eight, nine, and ten.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak, I'm sorry, Henderson, a second from Councilwoman Vera. All those, uh, roll call vote?
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Infrastructure Committee, Councilwoman Hurtak.
I move items eleven through sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak, we have a second from Councilwoman Miranda. Roll call vote?
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Finance Committee, Councilwoman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move item seventeen to nineteen.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Vera. Roll call vote?
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera? Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Okay, in the next group, we had a request from Councilwoman Hurtak to pull item twenty-six for discussion. So, uh, Councilman Carlson, would you move?
Yes, sir, um, also, I need to recuse myself from number twenty-four. Um, a client of my firm, it, it may have an interest in that. So although my firm is not working on that particular issue just then, but as a caution, I'll recuse myself. So I'll move, um, twenty through twenty-three, then twenty-five and twenty-seven.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilwoman Vera. All, roll call vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
And if I may, just be sure, I'll move twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to move number twenty-four from Councilwoman Vera, a second from Councilwoman Henderson, a roll call vote?
Hertek?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson abstained, Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously with Carlson abstaining and Amanasako being absent.
Okay, we'll address item 26 when we get to the, we'll get to that in the agenda. And since I am pro temp today acting chair, we're going to ask Councilwoman Henderson to move items 28 to 29.
Second.
I move items 28 and 29 for mobility and asset management.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Hertek?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda? And Carlson?
Yes.
Amanasako absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Yeah, we said them 26. Okay. Can I have a motion to open public hearings? We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. Roll call vote. Do we have to roll call to open? No, okay, we don't have. Okay, all those in favor, open public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Very good. And that was the 10 o'clock hearings. Thank you so much. Why don't, why don't we move on to the, I know we're going to skip ahead a bit, but let's go back to 26 and address that now, please. Is any objection to that? Yeah.
Question is whether it's your intent to have staff present and be able to address any questions or concerns or state their positions if they're here.
Let's go ahead and do these two quick second readings.
You want to do it?
Yeah, because the, I don't, we'll see how long they take.
Yeah, we'll see. Okay, very good. If anybody is in the chamber today to testify on items 30 or 31, please rise and be sworn in.
Do you swear at all time that you are about to provide the truth and the truth?
Yes.
And actually, I see that's item 32 too as well, I guess. But we have, yeah, we haven't opened until 10:30, yeah. We can't, we can't do 32 until 10:30, so. You want to do it for 30 and 31? We're, yeah, we're going to wait until, until 10:30 because it's 10:30. Okay, so the public hearings have been opened first, so let's move on to items 30. We have, anybody to present for 30? Come on up.
Good morning.
Staff, I'm sorry, staff.
Good morning, Councilor for the record, Christopher Demont's Development Coordination. Item number 30 is REZ 24-113. This item is a rezoning request for property located at 9220, 9222, and 9224 North Hialeah Road in folio number 141810.0100. This is a request to rezonate from residential single-family 60, residential multifamily 24, and residential multifamily 35 to plan development for residential single-family attached and semi-detached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, applicant, state your name.
Good morning, Celia Kaufman-Carruthers. This case has been before you previously, so I'm just here to take any additional questions you may have.
Any questions? We have, we have a motion. Anybody in the public hearing wish to speak on this issue? We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who wants to read? You want to do it in order?
I'll read.
Councilwoman Miranda.
Chairman, item number 30, file number REZ 24-113, orders being presented for second reading and adoption on orders rezoning property general vicinity of 9220, 9222, 9224 North Hialeah Road, and folio number 141810/0100. In the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section 1 from zoning district classification, RS 60 residential single-family, RM slash 24 residential multifamily, and RM 35 residential multifamily to PD, plan development, residential single-family, semi-detached and attached, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Viera. Roll call vote.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
And Amanasako is absent. Motion carry unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item, Councilwoman Miranda, you're, you abstained.
Yes, sir, and the reason is the trust that I manage has a property that backs it back to this house, and I was notified by mail, so I'll step out.
Sir, did?
I rescinded it.
Oh, you already did? Oh, that's right. Thank you so much. Receive and file, please.
We have a motion to receive and file from Councilman, Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Viera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, so let's move staff on item number 31.
Again, for the record, Christopher Demont's Development Coordination, item number 31 is REZ 2509. This is an item to request rezoning for the property located at 2520 West Beach Street. The request is to rezonate from residential multifamily RM 16 to RM 18. This is a Euclidean rezoning. There's no site plan associated with the request this morning. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, and applicant?
The applicant's representative is online. However, I'm not able to move her over. There's technical issues. I cannot meet her.
By, can she talk on audio?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we, the question is whether she has anything that she would need to say. You cannot turn on your video, is that the issue?
Yeah, it looks like the video is not working on my end.
Do you have any objection to moving forward without you having any comments?
No, sir, yep. So I'm just the authorized agent for James Lisker beside in 25 Developments. There's no follow-up statement on my end. From the first hearing, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the applicant is unable to participate due to not having the ability to activate the video. So we'll move past that. Are there anybody here in public comment for this item? We have a motion to close.
So move.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Vera, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Councilwoman Viera.
Yes, sir. I move in ordinance presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 22, I'm sorry, 2520 West Beach Street in city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section 1 of zoning district classification RM 16, residential multifamily to RM 18 residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Viera, a second from Councilwoman Henderson. Roll call vote.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda abstaining. Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Amanasako. Motion carry unanimously with Miranda abstaining and Amanasako being absent.
Okay, we're moving along too quickly. We can't get to the 10:30s yet, so we will move back to the consent agenda item 20, was it 26?
26.
26.
Is there, is there anyone here from staff on that item? If not, we have other items.
Well, it was just pulled for discussion, so.
Well.
Well, we can, what I can.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilwoman, you do have items that will not need staff, that are placed under staff reports for motion by council for the resolutions.
I would, I would like to just discuss it really quickly, 26, to see if staff wants to show up or not. And I just, I just, the, the comments from the public make a lot of sense.
So Councilwoman Hertek, let's get us move forward.
Oh, looks like, looks like Ms. Beely is here.
Very good.
Good morning, Councilor. I just actually wanted to let you know that Michelle Van Loon is on her way over to Chambers for this matter. So if you could just hold for a moment, she will be there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we will be sitting hold then.
So then I move items 35, 30, and 38 and all, and, yeah, 35 and 38.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek moving items 35 and 38.
Oh, oh, you're right, sorry.
Okay.
35.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek moving items 35. Is there a second?
Second.
And do I need a roll call on that one?
Yeah, and 7 million, so yeah.
Roll call vote.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Amanasako. Motion carry unanimously with Amanasako being absent.
Councilwoman Hertek.
I motion to receive and file 43 through 48.
We have a motion to receive and file 43 through 48.
What was that?
Minus 47. I'm sorry, that needs to be continued. So, so I'm sorry, I move to receive and file 43 through 46 and 48.
Okay, we have a motion to receive items 43.
Well, we can't talk about them, so we have to receive and file them.
Okay, with the exception of 47, which we're going to continue, we have a motion to receive and file from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Henderson. Roll call vote.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously with Amanasako being absent.
Can we have a motion to continue item 47?
It's Councilwoman Viera's, but I will move it, that, this, item, file number CM 25-12905, requesting to be moved to July 31, 2025.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek to continue item 47 to July 31, 2025. Okay, and we have a second from Councilwoman Viera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it. And here we are, back to consent agenda item 26.
Good morning, Michelle Van Loon, Real Estate. I appreciate your patience. I had someone in my office.
You just didn't know we were going to move this fast.
I can, I can address it fast. The vast majority of our leases do have escalation clauses. This is not a standard lease. It is a license and is a non-exclusive license for one year. This property is also part of the larger lease for the Hillsborough Education Foundation. Hang on.
Okay.
I was trying to catch my breath a second. So every year, Hef has a right of first refusal to utilize this property, and that's why this is just a one-year license. It's also non-exclusive. So if we had someone else that we also wanted to provide a license to on this property for, again, up to one year, we could also do that. We are in the process of issuing a new RFP for the entire property that Hef is in, so that Hef can extend their lease further on down the road to do additional capital improvement projects. So we're going to be looking at redoing their lease early and not wait till 2030 so they have, hopefully, that ability to know they've got the security and then make those additional several hundred thousand dollars worth of capital investments in their main building. So at that time, we most likely will be looking at separating out this property, and then it can be a standard lease.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the explanation. And if no one else has any questions, I'll move 26.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
And Henderson?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously with Amanasako being absent.
Thank you.
We do not have an administrative update, so waiting to be able to open up the 10:30 hearings, it's 10:16. How about we just take a quick little physiological break and we could, if just, if y'all come back right at 10:30, not a council 10:30, like a real person 10:30?
And maybe, maybe Abby can do her.
Oh, which, which, yeah, let's take the 14-minute break. Yeah, yeah.
Muted.
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 Order, roll call vote.
Carlson. Hertak.
Here.
Clint Dennen.
Here.
Henderson.
President.
Viera. Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco, we have a fiscal question.
Unmuted.
What was that? Councilman Carlson, are you on?
Is Councilman Carlson on?
There he is. Councilman Carlson is in the House. Councilman Carlson, love the picture on the back wall.
Thank you.
Based on me driving by it day before yesterday, it looks like that picture needs to be updated.
Yeah, this is a Dean Mitchell painting from several years ago.
Yeah, that's art.
Very nice, very nice. Okay, so we left off, we are going to, can I get a motion to open the 10:30 hearing? We have a motion for Councilwoman Hertech, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, this is not quasi judicial, so nobody has to be sworn in, so you're good, Mr. McElhany. And staff.
It is quasi.
Okay, I'm sorry. Look at how you set me up like that. Okay, if you're going to testify on this item, please stand, raise your right hand, and the clerk will swear you in.
If you swear hard round, it definitely ensures your privacy, you can live the virtue.
I do.
There you go. Thank you.
Bottom being.
Good morning. Elaine Lund, Historic Preservation Staff. The item before you here is an application to remove a portion of a property from the Tampa Heights Local Historic District. This is a vacant lot resulting from a lot split. And the application was submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission in September of 2024. And it was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on November 5th, 2024. And the HBC recommended that City Council approve this application. This is a picture of the lot at 206 West Columbus Drive. You can see some of the construction on the adjacent property to the west. And then I just wanted to show you the property that is directly to the east. This is the Pippin House at 202 West Columbus Drive. So the Pippin House is kind of an unusual addition to the Tampa Heights Local Historic District. There are a few parcels that are outside the contiguous boundary of the local historic district. The boundaries of the historic district, the local district are shown here in red. And that's in the inset here. This is the site that's part of the subject request. So this is a 2022 aerial map showing, in the green, the outline of the area that was included in the local historic district. It included all of that parcel at the time. And then in the blue dash line is the adjacent site, 206 Columbus Drive. A formal determination in 2023 reconfigured these two lots at 202 and 206 West Columbus. So this reconfiguration of the lots took, I believe, I want to say it's 32 feet from 202 Columbus and made it part of 206 Columbus. So this 32 feet that was moved from one lot to the other is the subject of the application for removal from the historic district. The Historic Preservation Commission used the Section 27257 of the City Code, the designation criteria, to review and make their recommendation. The vacant subject lot does not meet any of the criteria for local historic designation as it is vacant. And the removal of the subject lot will not have any negative impact on the historic district. Anything that's built on the lot in this future could not, by definition, be historic and therefore could not contribute to the historic district. Therefore, the HBC recommended that City Council approve this application to remove the subject property from the local district. The applicant's here, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Does Council have any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Applicant.
Good morning, City Council. Steve McElhany, representing the petition. Is the microphone working? Doesn't sound like it, but anyway. This is an out parcel. It's approximately 32 feet wide by 125 feet deep. It was recommended by approval to be removed from the district as it has no adverse impact on the district. It also was recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission. The district designation bisects the property. And it would not ordinarily be allowed to be included. So let me show you this right here. So the historic designation line is here, and this is the request for it to be removed. So that this is all one property under one jurisdiction. As Elaine has pointed out, it's not contiguous to the historic district. And I will show you, the historic district is over here, and this parcel is right up here. So it skipped several blocks before you even get to it. We had support from the Planning Commission as well as the staff and the Historic Preservation Commission. There are no adverse impacts, no economic, cultural, or historic impacts to remove this from the district. I have two letters of support from adjacent property owners that I'd like to have entered into the record.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilman Viera to receive and file. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All of the criteria have been met for favorable consideration to remove this from the district designation. I would respectfully request your approval to move this forward. And this was first reading on the ordinance to remove it from the district. I appreciate your support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council? I have one question. The historic house we're taking this from, what is left as far as a setback on the side of that house? Do we end up with another Jackson House situation?
Well, it's not taking it from that. That was decided by a formal decision in 2022.
Historically, was it, is it?
It was all, it was a much larger parcel. But right now, I can show you that the, I have the photographs. Right now, there are townhouses all around this and a vacant lot. But the historic house will be protected. We've already been through that with the Historic Preservation Commission and the staff. And we will mimic the wall in front. There's a little knee wall that runs across the front, and we'll be reconstructing that as well. So we talked about that at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. And they had requested a masonry wall be placed between the two properties to.
Do you have an overhead for that?
Well, it's not part of this petition, but.
I'm just curious about what the, maybe staff asks what that land looks like when this is all said and done.
I don't. He wants to know the distance between the two properties.
I may have that information in their application, if you bear with me a moment.
I think you're getting help.
It would be. 7 feet.
7 feet, okay, okay. Very good. Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions? Councilwoman Miranda?
I just want to say that for three years of my life, I walked right across the street from this house. It was on Highland and Old. It's the old Jefferson High School.
No drivers.
So I remember all that vividly, and I remember going across the street, getting expelled for going to eat across the city Jefferson High School property, which is about 10 feet outside. And so I remember all that like it was yesterday. My memories are coming back. There was not only that house, other houses like that down the lane, which are no longer there. And that should be the old gold ring, and there was a service station, then you head into the corner where you had a dragonette. And across the street was another service station that do paint jobs and spraying jobs and so forth and so on, fixing automobiles. So when y'all were speaking, I was memorizing when I was 17, 18, and 19 years old, whatever it was, and I really enjoyed going there. But that hasn't to do with zoning.
Expelled from high school, and look at you now.
I didn't say I was expelled. I was asked to leave. Only joking with you, sir.
Councilwoman Henderson.
No, she's ready to read it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, in public comment, anybody in the public which to speak on this issue?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Henderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Viera. Roll call vote. Can we do the motion to close? Okay, so all those in favor to close, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Eyes have it. Councilwoman Henderson.
Sure. Yes, pro temp. File number HPC 2439C, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, removing the property located at 206 West Columbus Drive, Tampa, Florida. And more particularly described in Section 3 hereof, from the Tampa Heights Historic District, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilwoman Viera. Roll call vote.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hertak.
Yes.
Clint Dennen.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
And Viera.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on May 1st, 2025, at 10 o'clock a.m. In City Council, Chamber 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, Third floor, Tampa, Florida, 336002.
You forgot to make the motion, but the special dispensation for Councilman Miranda and his suspension.
Been asked to leave.
Thank you very much.
Record, Abby was asked to leave. Very good. Enjoy. Okay, we are going to move on to staff reports. Yeah, staff. Okay, let's see. Do we have staff for item 34? Just shut up. Ms. O'Hara.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Council. Dennis O'Hara, Chief.
It's usually afternoon by the time you show up here.
And I'm moving slower today. Thank you for having us here today. We also have mobility staff here for you. This item asks that revenue be recognized and appropriated by City Council for a U.S. Department of Transportation grant, and that existing budgets for two projects be realigned and transferred to the Unite Ashley Drive project. We've provided a staff report, but I do want to reiterate that this is only part of what we anticipate the total funding need to be. At this time, it's estimated to be a total of $22 million. So what this item also does is give some insight into some of the potential future revenue sources to make up the difference of that $22 million. And again, mobility staff is here, I'm here, and we can answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. O'Hara? Councilwoman Hertech.
Thank you. I think my biggest concern remains that we aren't going to get this funding. And I think that asking for us to pay $12 million more is a huge concern. We got this in a memo on August 29th that said this project's estimated cost was going to be $10 million, $10.7 million. And not even five months later, in February, we have a $22 million estimate. It took, I don't know how long, to get the estimate for Fire Station 24, but yet we have some quick turnaround when it comes to this project. Why didn't this come to us in September when this came to us initially? Why didn't this overage because it was clearly known about? Because five months is like a nanosecond in planning time.
I can't speak to the timeframe.
Perhaps it would be best if we had somebody from mobility.
I was going to say, I see our Director of Mobility, Vic B. Day, approaching the podium.
And Brandon. Mr. B. Day.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Council. Vic B. Day, Mobility. That's a fair question. We received the updated estimate last July from our consultant. That was a draft estimate. At that time, there wasn't an item in front of council to be presented. But, you know, so there was no opportunity to update. so there was no opportunity to update council on the estimate until there was an item to come in front of council.
I'm holding the memo from August 29th, which is after July, that says the project's estimated cost is 10.7 million. You did have an opportunity.
So my, I need to look at the details, but that would have been an error on our part because I did have an email. I don't know if that was a final estimate from HNTB in 2024, July 2024, if I'm not mistaken, with the updated estimate.
And again, this is a month later.
Correct.
This is part of the problem that we have overall, is that we aren't getting clear information, and I don't, personally, I don't know that I would have accepted this grant had I known that we were going to have to pay $17 million instead of 4.9 million. That's a huge discrepancy for, quite frankly, something that is more of a need than a want, or rather, a want than a need. Pardon. So I just... I can't support this. And then, when I looked at the award amount and the project, the base phase is 1.2 million dollars, just for design alone. I don't know, I'm curious what others have to say about it.
Councilman Viera?
Thank you very much. So a couple of things. So if I'm reading this right, where, how much are we getting from the federal government? How much are we getting?
About five and a half million.
And we'd be on the hook for 17?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot. Somebody had mentioned, I think it may have been this pointer, regarding CRA funds. Potentially, we could continue this and look to see what we have in the downtown CRA for this, you know, if this is something that is needed in downtown. Spending so much on general funds, I'm very skeptical of that, you know, but CRA?
May I address that, Councilman? That's a great point. We have started that conversation with the CRAs. We've requested $8 million over three outer years, fiscal years. That request has formally been submitted and is under review by the CRAs right now. The CAC presentation is scheduled. I think the item in front of you right now is so that we can cover the entire cost of the project. This is somewhat similar to the West River Walk conversation, where we're working actively to line up additional funding, and that should be in front of you at a CRA meeting in the future.
So, I mean, my preference, and are there any immediate timelines with this?
So, Brandon Campbell, Mobility Department. We do have two pending work orders with our consultant for concept development and NEPA evaluation. That timeline gets significantly compressed should we not have the available funds. So part of the intent of the financial resolution today is to get those funds into the account so that we can issue those work orders. But as I believe Mr. O'Hara mentioned, today's financial resolution does not obligate that whole $22 million. It appropriates the federal grant, the anticipated federal grant money, as outlined in the grant agreement, as well as moves funds from a couple of other projects.
So today, how much are we putting forth today by voting, if we vote yes for this, which I, but just to be clear?
Hello, everyone, council. Approximately $10 million, sir. And if I could just postscript the director's comments, again, he's quite correct. It puts, it appropriates funding in place for those work orders he references, but it does presume that there will be additional funding down the road to equal that $22 million. Just want to clarify.
I think that on this, seeing some more movement, I know the CRA takes a little while, but with CRA, maybe wise for this, so that we can at least note what we're going into, because I'd hate to, you know, buy into something right now and then have the CRA issue not be as secure as it, as we maybe thought it was. But, yes, sir.
Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and along with my two colleagues who just spoke. When I see this, and if I was on the other side just listening, I wouldn't know what we're talking about. So please explain what this $22 million, if it happens, is for what? What is it going to do? How much it going to take? And if we pass it today, if, 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 what happens at the end? If the prices keep escalating, I don't know that. I don't know what your deal is with the contractor. I don't know none of that stuff right now. But I think we have to explore, what is it? What are we doing, and why we're doing it?
Yes, I appreciate the question. Again, Brandon Campbell, Mobility. I did bring a map of the project area, in part because of, when we were in front of you back in February, there were some questions about the division of the different work items between the city and the current RFP and what FDOT may be following on with. So the $22 million project, are you able to see?
Can you zoom out?
Is that me, or? Okay.
Other way. There you go.
So that $22 million project is addressing the area that's outlined in red, south of the Laurel Street Bridge, whereas to the east of that, you see some brown blocks that are labeled as future mixed-income housing development. That's a, within our grant application, that was labeled as stage three, and that network improvement, we anticipate going along with the current RFP for the Army-Navy lot, Army-Navy site and Royal Regional Lot redevelopment. And then the portion that is outlined in blue is on FDOT, and I know that in our previous discussion, there was some question about what contribution to this overall effort they would be making and what the cost would be for their project. So that associated project, their current estimate is 12.1 million. It's not yet obligated, but based on staff discussions, we are encouraged that pending our approval of our grant project, that they will program that subsequent to it.
Anything else?
Yeah. May I say?
Yes, yes.
Vic B. Day. So to your question, Councilman, what does this project give us? So the gist of this project is to support the Royal Regional Lot development, but also to improve connectivity and walkability between East Downtown, particularly Northeast Downtown, by Encore and all of those neighborhoods, east of Florida Avenue, to the river. And that is going to be accomplished by, if you go north on Ashley today, if you get at Tyler, there's a bridge past Tyler that starts, that goes up to 275, and then splits into northbound and southbound. So that bridge is city-owned. It will be removed, and we will be reestablishing the grid like it was before the 50s, whenever that bridge was built. The idea there is it will increase street connectivity across from both the east and the western part of downtown. It will provide alternate modes of getting around, and what it also does is creates additional development opportunities in our downtown that today do not exist because of that. So there's opportunities to create a gateway, which is part of this project, additional developable possibilities and green spaces, while improving overall connectivity.
Okay, all that being said, if I may continue, Mr. Chairman, how do we codify that those monies that they're going to spend, I'm talking about the state, normally, the people that do that, what if that doesn't come in?
That is a possibility, and that's where this project coordinates with several efforts. This project coordinated with the regional, Royal Regional Lot redevelopment. It coordinated with FDOT as well. When the project was first conceived, it was part of then FDOT's plans for Segment Five, which is the downtown interchange portion west of I-4. That project is still on the books with FDOT, and going forward, it's just not the same project as previously. But FDOT staff have indicated that they do plan to move forward with it as part of the West Shore.
One more, and I'll yield.
Go ahead.
Does this in any way help the malfunction junction that we have there now or not?
This helps downtown significantly. What it does is, one, it reduces traffic on Ashley by creating a viable alternative at Scott and Tampa. So it redistributes traffic across the grid. That's one thing. And Ashley, of course, is the major roadway leading into downtown along Curtis Hickson and all of that. So it allows us to calm that. The city has a goes-with project with this project to, again, add bicycle facilities along Ashley, parallel to the Riverwalk, to get bicycles off of the Riverwalk. FDOT, when they do their portion of the Scott Street, and they're in design right now, they just can't commit because it's not in their work program to show today, but we've had conversations with them, they will improve the intersection of Scott and Tampa with a dual-right configuration. And again, this is consistent with everything else that we're doing, making downtown more walkable and more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists while creating a gateway and development opportunity.
And just for the record that we're having this conversation, I've never spoken to either one of these two gentlemen, emailed anything to that effect.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hertak, you have something? Councilman Henderson, do you have something?
I don't know, Councilman Carlson.
And I do, too.
Oh, Councilman Carlson, okay, let's, we'll go with, I missed you, Councilman Carlson. Go ahead.
I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. But the issue that we're facing is that any project that's presented to us is, sounds like a great project. They're projects that are necessary, and they'll have a lot of community benefit. But the thing that we're hearing every day, maybe 100 times a day, is that the public wants us to spend money on fixing their roads, fixing their sidewalks, and if we have general fund money that we're spending on anything else, the public is going to get more and more angry. We've got to fix their roads and sidewalks first. If we've got 10 or more million dollars that we can spend to fix roads and sidewalks, we need to do that. I think this project sounds great, but until we fix their roads and sidewalks, we shouldn't be doing anything else like this. Also, the public is frustrated that for 12 years or so, a lot of money's been spent in downtown, but very little has been spent everywhere else. Everybody thinks that their neighborhood is the only one with terrible roads and no sidewalks, but it's not, because it's all over the city. And we've got to, we've got to fix those problems first. The more we keep approving these nice-to-have projects, the more we're going to get hit. There's also, as one of my colleagues mentioned, there's an issue of transparency here. The administration throws projects on us at the last minute and says, okay, now you have to do it quickly. Well, they should keep us updated along the way. Next is, it's also presumptuous to think that we're going to get CRA money. Now, the CRA Board, which is us, did approve the West River Walk project. I think I voted against it from the CRA point of view, but it is presumptuous to think that. But conversely, if we're going to do this, it probably should come from CRA money because it benefits downtown and not the rest of the city. There are other people in the city working downtown could benefit from it, but people want their roads and their neighborhoods, and they want their sidewalks and their neighborhoods fixed first. And then there's a timing issue. As was mentioned earlier, I think we should at least push this past the next CRA meeting. And it's not just what the CAC say, we need the CAC report, but sitting as a CRA Board, we should be briefed on this as well, because it is a huge expenditure, and we have very little money in the downtown CRA. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. Councilman, I don't remember who was first. Councilman Hertak?
Thank you. I just asked Mr. Huberline to put this up, just so that we could get an idea of what we're talking about. So the federal grant, if we receive it, is 5.3 million. We're looking at the 2016 bond funds, and these are the ones from the two bridges they want to move over because there was overages. And then, it's that's 8 million possibly from the CRA, and then 3.9 million, which is future debt, mobility fees, and/or CIT renewal. That is the money that we're talking about could possibly go to paving or other things, the 3.9. So I tend to agree. I just, I cannot... So I have a question for Mr. O'Hara. Those CIT series, 2016 bond fund?
Yes, ma'am.
The extra, which, am I correct, is the 4.7 million the extra from those two projects?
It is not extra. It is not extra. The funding originates in a 2016 bond, and it's been almost a decade now. So because the funding hasn't been spent in quite some time, it seems more appropriate to spend it on something we can spend it on sooner rather than later, and then find funding for those projects at another time.
Okay. So then, my question would be, could we take that 4.7 million and use it for something else? Is it required to be spent on infrastructure?
It is required to be spent only within the parameters of the initial bond issuance, which, for example, as you mentioned earlier, would include repaving, resurfacing.
Okay. So technically, so possibly, we could actually put that 4.7 toward paving?
You could.
Okay. So again, to me, this, oh, and I had one more question for you, Mr. O'Hara. Where do you anticipate this money coming from, this 5.3 million, if the federal government backs out of its deal?
That's an excellent question. It would come from any of those other potential funding sources that we've referenced, you know, the CRA, for example, Community Investment Tax Version Two that comes online.
So us, it would take from projects that the city wants to do, that our citizens are asking for, such as paving or sidewalks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it's just too much money, y'all? I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Councilman Viera?
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts, which is, Councilman Carlson had mentioned about the next CRA meeting, which I guess is on April 10th. And, you know, I think a wise move would be to have a discussion on this at the CRA. Somebody could do a memo where we, a request to our chairperson, where we inquire on this issue, and then we talk about this on April 17th. But I feel very uncomfortable if the federal money is not 100% wrapped up, especially given the chaos on the federal level. That bothers me a lot, because I don't want us to be on the hook. You know, downtown for me is always a balance, which is, you know, money, folks who use downtown often come from all over the city of Tampa. A lot of people work downtown. A lot of people go have a good time downtown and so forth, and so people from all over our city of Tampa, I think, obviously, use downtown. It's a balance. You know, I voted against, I think, like $35 million in CRA projects in downtown Tampa, because I, my opinion on those things, that it's always a balance. You know, this is part of the prior administration, Biden Administration's Reconnecting Communities Grant, right? Which is seeking to reconnect communities from prior infrastructure additions to those communities from the 50s and so forth. I think it's wise to push this about two weeks or so, so that we can gain more information, have a better perspective on it to look at. And we're not going to have an answer for the federal government by then, by the way, because that's just, yeah, that's just not going to happen, not with those guys. But, and then, so we can at least look at the CRA and see what the CRA can do. Because I, putting forth all this city money on it when the federales may not even come through on it really bothers me. It really does. But I don't want to let go of it just yet, if that makes sense. I think that's a good compromise to give us a little bit of time. That's my view on the 17th.
Go ahead, Councilman Viera.
If I may, my second time, I somewhat agree with everything's been said. Mr. Viera is making common sense about if we're talking to another partner who's not here on the table, how do we know what's going to happen? You have some doubt in the government money, the 5.3 million or whatever. In fact, when you look at, when you hear the word CIT, I want to grow hair again, because I lost it all during the 1996 election and during this past election, when we go away $850 million, because we didn't tell the public the fact that that was your damn money going away to somebody else. If we hadn't voted the other way, you had money to do anything you wanted to do. But we got sold, and the public voted on it, for it. I'm not against the public. That's what they want, that's what they got. So now, we're dealing with some money that would have been ours, that's no longer ours, and that, let me say it again, $850 million in a period of 15 years you're giving away. Thank you.
Okay, if I'm hearing council correctly, it seems like an appropriate motion at this point would be to continue this item to possibly June 5th. Would there be, anybody willing to make that motion?
So because the CRA meeting is next week, I don't think there's enough time for them to plan, so I would say that we would do the May 8th CRA meeting, and then, to then talk about it, like you said, I think you're right, June 5th.
Maybe we can make a motion to continue the item?
I will make, I make a motion to move, to have a conversation about this during, oh, I can't do that. So you know what? I can make the motion next week during the CRA, but what I can do is move this conversation to June 5th.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Hertak, to continue this item to June 5th. A second from, I heard a second, but I didn't hear Lewis Viera. All those in favor, say aye. Rob's our roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you do that?
If I may, I did want to speak quickly to the level of certainty about the federal contribution to the project. I do have a biweekly check-in meeting with a point of contact from FHWA, and at our I do have a biweekly check-in meeting with a point of contact from FHWA, and at our most recent check-in meeting, he did share with me that those grants for which we have agreements signed and in place, they are no longer under review within his office. Now, the level of comfort that that might bring to any one of you, I couldn't speak to, but I did want to bring that to the discussion, just to let you know that from the staff level, all indications are that this, this money, because it is within an executed grant agreement, is safe.
Yeah, I saw a news report last evening from the Secretary of Transportation saying that their grants were all being processed through and pushed through based, because it was pressure from Congress to get those through, because of, of course, the impact on commercial districts, so.
If I may.
Okay, so, well, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there anything else we need to add before we do roll call vote?
I can speak out.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second to continue this item to June 5th. I roll call vote, please.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Clint Denon?
Yes.
And Henderson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously, with Manasco being absent.
Councilman Vera, you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, and so with the feds, that's good to hear. My big thing is to look at our CRA and see how much we can get out of them. If you can get another million or two, let's do that.
I heard that Councilman Hertak was going to take that on. Councilman Hertak.
Uh, well, I mean, in looking at this, this project schedule, so for me, one of the first things is the base phase, which is the design and construction engineering is 1.2 million. And since this is a refundable grant, I think I'd be more comfortable if we used the money or if we went through the design phase process and we were able to get that money. I still won't support this, because it's $17 million that we could be spending on roads, to be quite frank. But, but yeah, I mean, that, if you, if you all were concerned about the federal money, that is a way that you could look at it. You could see if they actually pay us the 1.2 for design and planning before we go forward with the actual construction.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we are finished with number 34. We are now to item number 36. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, counsel.
And it's you again.
It is me again, yes. Again, Brandon Campbell, Mobility Department. Items 36 and 37 go together.
Okay, so let's do 36 and 37 together.
Yes, and so we have uploaded a, an agreement. It's a, it is a state-funded grant agreement. It is actually a three-party agreement, though, between the city, Hillsborough County, and Florida Department of Transportation, for $21 million, funding seven projects with the funds that were collected by the 2018 CRTAX, and then went through their process, and those projects were selected by the state legislature with our input. I did upload a map, I think it was yesterday or the day before, after a discussion with Councilwoman Hertak, that shows the different segments within the city limits.
Can you show that us, to us now?
Oh, I did not print it. Thank you. So some of the segments are contiguous to one another, so it might not, if you're just counting the red lines, it may not add up to seven, but those, actually, the green lines, I suppose I should say. Those green lines are the projects that the city will be taking on, funded with that 21, $21 million of CRTAX projects. The red lines are county projects that overlap into city limits. So you'll see a little bit of overlap in New Tampa on Bruce B. Downs, and then a couple of others that come into the city, but will be led by Hillsborough County. My understanding is that at the Board of County Commissioners meeting yesterday, they approved the same agreement, so pending your approval and the execution on our side, it will go up through them and then head over to FDOT for their execution of the agreement. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Councilwoman Hertak.
I appreciate the map, because I think it gives a clear definition and an understanding for citizens of Tampa who put in way more than $21 million and are certainly not getting that back. I think it's very nice for them to be able to see what they're actually getting for that money. But also, I was curious, is this simply repaving, or will there be anything else done?
So the primary, the primary scope of each of these projects will be resurfacing, but there will be ancillary items that would go along with that. ADA ramp upgrades. There may be some opportunities to reconfigure striping, not as a sort of primary effort. And if there are signing needs, FDOT has indicated to us that, you know, some of these things that would typically go along with one of their resurfacing projects, they're not going to question the need.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mar, Councilman Mar.
And again, I don't want to be the devil in the, at City Hall, but what was said earlier is correct. City of Tampa pays about 31% of the total sales tax in the whole county. And when you look at it, somewhere along the line, we got short change, not by you, not by anyone in this building here, but somehow, somehow, and I don't know who, why, and where, we get back 21 million when the city just to our east, a third of our size gets back 10 and 1/2 billion. So these are the things that you have to look at, and we got to, we got to stand up, not you guys, but us elected officials have to stand up to whoever's doing these calculations, because we get, what back? Half of what we should get back, I'll say that. And these are the facts that we're saying, I'm not as smart as an individual, but I can count to 10. Thank you.
Councilman Vera.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, I mean, I'll obviously support this. This has a lot of good projects, but I was speaking with Mobility on this, and it is, number one, you start off with the idea that in 2018, about 60% of people in the county supported, you know, said, "Hey, listen, our roads are so bad, please raise my taxes." And, and that got taken away, obviously, because of the All for Transportation litigation. 2022, before we could even vote on it, it was kicked out in the circuit court, and it almost passed in a year where transit-friendly candidates did very well, but yet, or strike that, and not so transit-friendly candidates did not do so well, excuse me, but the initiative almost passed, even with the litigation. So you take a look at this and what we're passing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Plant City and Temple Terrace, they got the same amount as Tampa?
I do not know what the, their amounts were, but...
But it's not proportionate, and by the way, I grew up in Temple Terrace, my mother lives in Temple Terrace. I love Temple Terrace, I love Plant City, et cetera. Right, yeah, no, I really do love Temple Terrace and Plant City. But, but it is just something to look at, and the fact that, that we here in the city didn't have much of a say on this is frustrating, because we represent as well the people who voted for this and who paid out of their hard-earned money to make this happen. And when I look at what people, the 400,000 people in the city of Tampa paid for this, including the people, by the way, of District Seven, who are not really getting much, by the way, again, that's why I'm a little pissed off, right, is, it's frustrating, it really, really is. And, but again, it was something that was out of our hands. So I wouldn't vote against this, because there's a lot of good projects, including the ADA improvement you talked about, and I think that's wonderful, and we want to represent the whole city, but just on principle, this is very, very frustrating. It really, really is, because in 2018, what we voted on and what we supported, what many of us endorsed, I know I endorsed it proudly in everything, was not this. We had a different vision that would have really helped working families in Tampa, so that's very frustrating. But, but again, I'll support this.
Mr. BDA, I saw you jump up, because I think you have some statistics. Could you, could you share with us how this, these funds broke, what was collected?
Sure.
Total, what was distributed, and how it was distributed?
Sure. Vic BDA, so first, Tampa is receiving significantly more than Temple Terrace, commensurate to our population and all. Plant City has a large number of projects, but the overall amount isn't as large. So I don't know the exact breakdown, but I'll be happy to share that. Overall, $580 million were collected as part of the CRTAX, $580 million. What we have through all of the allocations from the state to Hillsborough County, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and Tampa is about half that, a little over half of that. And my understanding is the balance did go towards the legal efforts to get us to the place that we're at right now. And again, we'll work with our partners to get these projects executed within the next five years.
So, yeah, I'll, listen, I, go ahead, because, yeah, I'm going to go off on a rant.
I beg you, I was going to say that I hereby withdraw my statement and the other municipalities. Thank you, Mr. BDA, for correcting the record on that, and my apologies. Thank you, that's all.
You know, it's, it's just downright theft and bad government of what has just transpired here. More, I mean, it is, we're talking over what, I think, close to like $250 million in quote-unquote "legal fees." So everybody wants to say, "Damn the lawyers," let's, I mean, "Damn the lawyers," and "Damn the politicians in Tallahassee." You know what, I'm sorry, you think you've got good legislatures representing you in Tallahassee? Look at this, this is what they're actually doing. Don't, don't, don't listen to what they tell you they're doing, look at what they're actually doing. They just stole your money, and especially for the city, I mean, for the people that live in the city of Tampa. You look at this map, look at the red dots, I mean, God bless them, they represented themselves, because what happened was Tallahassee sent the money to the county, and then the county redistributed. Well, guess what happened? They took all the money. How many projects are in the county? How many projects are in the city? It's like, it's like nothing. You know what, you know what I would have said to the freaking county? Pave your damn roads in the county first, in the city. Take the money and pave what you've neglected year after year after year. Most of the complaints I get about the roads in the city, they're not even city roads, they're county roads, because the county doesn't maintain their property that they're legally obligated to pay for in the city of Tampa. And the people that voted for this in the county should be ashamed of themselves that they let the city hang. And guess where the taxes, because the commerce happens within the city boundaries. So these taxes, a super amount of these taxes were collected within the boundaries of the city of Tampa. We, we have had our pockets picked. Every person that lives in the city of Tampa should be outraged by when they look at this map and they look at what the people that they elected to represent them in Tallahassee and in the county commission did to the city of Tampa on this map. That is shameful and a disgrace. Anybody else? Sorry.
All move 36 and 37?
So we have a motion from Councilman Hertak to move items 36 and 37. A second, Councilman Vera and Councilman Miranda, you had something?
I'm just going to vote against it, and I'll be criticized later on in life, but I'm tired of getting pushed around, and telling, telling me, "This is what you got, take it or leave it, to hell with you." And you know what, I'm telling them, "To hell with you, too."
Okay, we have a motion, and can we get the Councilman Carlson on screen so we can take a vote with him?
Councilman, Councilman Carlson, do you have something to say?
No, we don't have a choice in this because of the way the legislature brought it down, so I'm just going to vote for it.
Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Clint Denon?
No.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
And Miranda?
No.
Motion carried with Clint Denon and Miranda voting no, and Manasco being absent.
Okay. The next one will be much more pleasant, I'm sure. Item 39, Stormwater.
38.
I'm sorry, 38, we, yes, I'm sorry, 38. Thank you. Yeah.
Morning Chair, morning Counsel, Vic BDA, Mobility, here to address item 38. I'm joined by Brian Roger, our Operations Manager. Brian oversees a team of over 160 people across transportation and stormwater operations, and our cap team that helps with administration. So this is our monthly stormwater report that was requested, just to show what maintenance we do on the stormwater side, understandably, given the intense storm season that we had last year. So this is the overall work effort.
We can see it, thank you.
Oh, okay, great. So this is the overall work effort for, for the month of March. As you can see, we've done works on different culverts and pipes over 589 miles, 186 miles of ditches, 886 outfalls total. These are both river and saltwater outfalls. Worked on all of our pump stations, work continues, we're on target to have all of the generators active and in place at all of the pump stations before June 1st. We've been working on headwalls over a mile of that, and then retention ponds, about 150 retention ponds, and then a large number of inlets and manholes, and of course, about 1,900 miles, curb miles, of street sweeping across 32 routes. Our street sweeping is part of our stormwater operations, because street sweeping removes pollutants from the street, which impacts water quality, which is part of our MS4 permit, which is the municipally-separated storm sewer systems, which is a permit that we work under and operate under. We have a total of 62 full-time employees under Brian's leadership. He does have a stormwater chief that's included as part of these 62 that oversees multiple crews and various functions. Going to the next. Looking at our calls for service, we're still holding a large number of cave-in calls, a very large number. On that, just yesterday, Jerrel Turner, who is the Operations Chief for Stormwater, Brian and I worked with our purchasing team to initiate a $1 million contract to address cave-ins. So we're getting contractor support as well, that's in process right now. We continue to do a whole bunch of curb, gutter, manholes, and all kinds of work. And then if you look at our calls by month, of course, they're kind of steady, but in the month of March, we had about 157 or 161 calls, and they've reduced as storm season has kind of been further and further behind us. Calls for service are below, that's the breakdown of the 161, and the most prevalent call for service is drainage and backup issues. Now, these, the type of calls will change depending on storm season versus dry season. So at last month's report, Brian had said that we would be working on the neighborhoods that you saw on the top. Most of these are neighborhoods that were most affected by the flooding, University Square, North Tampa, Forest Hills, Beach Park, Palmese Apines, and many others. So we have worked on the systems in all of these areas. Some of the areas, like Palmese Apines and Beach Park, are still ongoing work, but we've either completed or are at all of these locations. And then, the specifics of the mark work accomplishments are listed below, but, you know, 2,900 miles of ditches regraded. We're also initiating a contract for ditch grading, thanks to counsel for making that funding available, and we'll put that to good use immediately. Over 500 tons of debris removed, and you did approve a piece of equipment that helps us move that debris onto trucks, and then we haul it out. And then 82 miles of ditches mowed. Again, 35,000 linear feet of pipes maintained, over 450 structures maintained, and then 17 outfall inspections. After inspections, they either do whatever maintenance they can then, or schedule that, and it just depends on what we're going to do, whether we use a spider, which is a special piece of equipment, which is currently being repaired. It's a very, we had to import it, I believe, is that right? Yeah. So it had to be imported. So we'll, we'll be coming, maybe next year, to ask for a replacement for that piece of equipment, and then the breakdown of street sweeping as well. Additional work that the team has been doing, or rather, work planned for April, will be in these neighborhoods, and that includes Terrace Park, Lowry Park, University Square. We'll continue to work there. Armenia Gardens, Drew Park, McFarland Park, Midtown, and Wellswood. I do want to say that our team is currently working six days a week, so that is additional time over and above our normal time. We are using mostly overtime, but also moving other resources around, and they've been out there, and we will stay on it. And they've been out there, and we will stay on it. We feel very good about maintaining the existing system as is to the best possible condition. Here's some pictures of what we've been up to and what we've been working on. This is the Copeland Park Pump Station that's being constructed right now. Cave-in repairs at Habana, and some before and after pictures. Oh, this is before, during, and again, more before, during, and after pictures of an inlet top repair. A lot of these inlet tops have sunk due to the conditions under them, soil conditions, pond maintenance, grady ditch, before, during, and after. As you can see, there's a significant amount of material that gets removed and vegetation that gets cleared and hauled away. More ditch grading. This is De Soto Heights, before, during, and after, before, during construction with our teams out there, and after. You'll see much of that material removed and the flow lines established, so the water is channelized appropriately. And then, this is just an internal report, but, you know, during our staff meetings, we go over our CAC team, Customer Service Administrative Support and Procurement Team. It's a team of about eight people that help us with everything from legal and tracking, and these are the folks that take the calls during the day, and then we have a call center service at night. Again, the number to call is eight-one-three-two-seven-four-three-one-oh-one for any storm-related concerns. But we track all kinds of concerns and inbound versus TCC. That ratio is important for us, especially because we want more Tampa Connect calls and fewer inbound calls, because inbound calls require people answering them and then additional coordination, whereas, as, and that's a very healthy ratio. As you compare us to maybe other departments, we've been able to kind of absorb that. And then we track our positions as well. Our vacancy rate is seven percent, which is about as healthy as it has been in the last four years, I would say. And, and that's for various reasons, but in general, hiring is a challenge. And the, the distribution of calls by district, we track that as well, so that we know what's going on. And this is really important. Our team looks at how many work orders were created and how many were completed. Now, this isn't a one-to-one correlation, because a lot of work orders created today might be worked on several months from now, but it gives us an idea of what's coming in versus what's getting out. So this is, and then the type of fix-it-fast requests, typically potholes are the highest, of course, but we monitor that, because if there's a lot of critical sign-down requests, then we want to know where those are at and what's going on, because those are your stop signs and yield signs that impact safety directly. And then finally, by division, because we've got the five divisions. Now, I will say that Parking does have their own call center, and they do a lot of intake as well. So these ten calls are what comes into our call center with CAP team. The Parking team themselves get hundreds of calls, as you can imagine, every month.
Mr. B. Day, thank you. That was one of the better reports I've heard. That was front-heart comprehensive and very encouraging to see the amount of work. I love that. Thank you. Councilman Hurtak?
Same. I just, I think, you know, I don't anticipate these going on forever, but these, a few months, just to really show the public what we're doing, I think is invaluable. These are, again, your department does a really great job with clear reports, and so just want to really thank you for that. And I know this report will be available on the website. Where, what is your website?
Absolutely. So this is on the website right now. It's tampa.gov/mobility.
Okay.
And if you scroll all the way down, you have the most current paving report, as well as the stormwater maintenance report. We have additional information on tampa.gov/metrics as well, and that offers more information. And then, just as a general public announcement, on April sixteen, and the notices should go out by tomorrow, we will be holding a virtual public workshop to, again, apprise all neighborhoods on the maintenance work that we're doing. We will be taking questions. We'll be addressing that as well. In fact, our whole team will be here in chambers for that workshop. It's from six to seven PM on April sixteenth, and community members will have an opportunity to submit their questions as part of the registration process.
Thank you. That's wonderful. If you could send that information to all of our offices, that way we can send it out for you as well. That sounds wonderful. Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate this, this fabulous report.
Councilman Miranda?
I, I want to thank you, same thing as Councilmember Hurtak spoke about. You're under the pressure, your whole division is under the pressure to do what you have to do now, something that happened, and you gotta plan for the future and fix the past. So you're in a very precarious position that you have to do both at the same time. That's very, very difficult. But you're doing a great job of getting it done. In fact, I'm one of your eyes and ears. I'm gonna give you three more that I saw just yesterday. At the corner of Glen heading south, about three blocks before Spruce, on the right-hand side, there's, you had a horse there where you make a right-hand turn. Well, the road is done well. The ditch, they don't have nothing suppressing the road, so therefore the road caved in of the exit to the, to the east, to the, to the western part of the road. And then you have on, on Glen, that's the one on Glen heading south, and then the one on, cave-in also on thirty-one-twenty-four, I saw the address last night, going home, in Tampa Bay Boulevard, and Lincoln. There's, that one there bothers me a lot, because it has complete on both sides of the ditch caving in, and there's a driveway that goes in and out for the, for the residents to have that, and I'm afraid that's gonna cave in. Then there's one more on Lincoln also, heading, I hate to bother you all this.
No, no, please.
On Lincoln, heading again north, on Lincoln, about three blocks, and I forgot the name of the street, but it's about three blocks before Tampa Bay Boulevard, the right-hand side, the same thing. Vehicles kept making the turn, and that roadway has sunk into the ditch. But I'm just letting you know what I saw, and again, I want to thank you and your department for doing an excellent job. And if you need any help, I'll help you on weekends.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Give that man, oh, don't give him a backhoe. Nothing with electricity.
I'll take the house down.
Councilman Hurtak?
I, I have, I have one too, because, just because, I mean, he just reminded me.
You guys know there are telephones in your office, right?
I know.
You know, our staff watch these meetings, so if I'm not mistaken, JT's making a note of this right now.
Um, the alley between Hannah and, and Idowild, between Tampa Street and Highland, has multiple, um, uh, cave-ins. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm not really sure why. I, it, yeah, it's, it's just kind of sudden, and it, they're so bad that you simply can't get a car, and quite a few people have vehicle access in that area.
Were these there after the storms, or are these more recent?
After. I would say they're recent, actually. No, they, probably the last month or so.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, very unusual.
Because that's good information for the team to know.
CCTV, we can't see Councilman Carlson, so I can't tell whether he's trying to get our attention or not, although I've never seen him look better. There he is.
You like to see me from afar? The, um, there is a cave-in on Bay Shore, and I think I forwarded it yesterday, and, and I think staff are aware of it, but that's worrisome because of all the different things that could affect. It's at a house adjacent to the road, but, but still, that's a big issue. I saw the Channel Ten story this morning, and I, and I wish that, in the communication, that you all could say that you appreciate working with city council and the public. You know, we're really just conduits for the public's issues, and we get hundreds and hundreds of these. And, and so as we're turning them in, I think it would be smart for you all to acknowledge that you are listening to the public. There's science attached to it, but there, but you're also listening to the public on what to do. That would set the public at ease that, that we are, all are listening to them. And the reason I mentioned city council is not to boost us, but just again to say that, that we're all working together to try to get this done. And then once we get past the immediate crises, my recommendation is that we, we go, many of the staff members have been going in, with me in pockets of neighborhoods, and I understand that staff is stretched. The, the stormwater department may want to get a neighborhood liaison, because I think after this, this, this emergency, I think what we ought to do is go either neighborhood by neighborhood, or, or stormwater basin by stormwater basin. And again, it should be city council working with the neighborhood leaders and the staff to talk about what your overall strategy is and, and long-term what you're planning to do, because the, the messages getting out are not specific enough to answer people's concerns. So thank you for the presentation today.
Uh, no, I'm done. I was trying to move this along. Yeah. Councilman Vera?
Yeah, and thank you. So just know really fast, I, I wanted to thank you for that April sixteenth virtual meeting. I think that's important. We also have a meeting on, I, I, because again, North Tampa's took such a big hit. As you know, we have a meeting on April fourteenth that I called. We are gonna have a staff member there, and I thank you and the administration for all your just constant help and everything. I remember, I guess Milton was on, I think, October ninth or tenth, Thursday, I think, or a Friday, I wonder if it was. And then that Tuesday, you know, y'all were just out there in a community meeting, a very difficult community meeting, and you guys have just always been out there, and I appreciate that. But we're gonna have you guys, Bob Enriquez will be there to talk about tax issues with people's homes and so forth. So, and, and, and the idea is kind of like your virtual meeting, which is to talk to people about what you guys are doing for coming storm season and everything, and there are, you know, short-term issues and then long-term issues, and we'll look forward to what that county independent review says on, on long-term things, master plan-type issues and all that. But again, just wanted to thank you guys, because y'all always work hard, so thank you.
Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Chairman, and I know you might be getting a little bored of me, and I appreciate you getting bored of me. Thank you very much. But what I'm saying is this, we can prepare all we want, be ready. The problem is, it's getting larger on the other side. The bay is three degrees warmer than it was the whole winter. And what's happening, we don't know what's coming. So we're preparing the best we can while we can. But this season, look at how many problems they've had in the mid-coast of the United States of America. Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, North and South Carolina. The problem that they've had, they've never experienced before, was more tornadoes than ever before. And the answer is why? We don't know. Well, I can tell you why. I don't know either. But I can tell you something. If we don't take our nature, it makes no difference what we do. We take your nature, we get less of a slap in the face of what's coming. But thank you all very much.
Okay, so thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I, I remind council that we have, I believe, three more items for staff reports, then we'll have, and then new business. So if we could keep this, next staff reports really quick, we may be able to conclude this before lunch. Knock, knock. Mr. Brad Baer, the legend.
Brad Baer, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure, here to talk about item forty, giving a presentation on pipes. Quick history lesson, pipes was approved by city council September fifth, twenty nineteen. Four members of this council were actually on that council, so thank you very much. It's the largest infrastructure program in the history of Tampa by far. And that is the primary reason we are one, excuse me, one of eight utilities that have, has three triple-A bond ratings, one of eight in the whole United States. So thank you very much. We are the envy of the whole United States. And with that, I'll ask the technical folks in the back to pull up their presentation and turn it over to Eric and Rory.
Good morning. Eric Weiss, Waste Water Department Director. I'm here to talk about the wastewater pipes program. The backbone of the program is putting together master plans. We have three general assets of our, of our system. One, our wastewater treatment plant, the Howard Curran Treatment Plant. Second is our wastewater pumping stations, two hundred and thirty of these all throughout the city of Tampa. And last, the actual pipes going down the street collecting the wastewater. I just have one comment on the master plan for the pipes, the actual pipes in the ground. Another backbone of that master plan, and it all starts with, we clean our pipes. If you've ever seen the big trucks with an orange barrel on the back going through town, we clean the inside of the pipes, and right behind them is another truck, a white truck, that we stick a TV camera down there and assess the condition of the pipe. By doing that, we constantly update that master plan, because we have new information, it scores it. Why I brought this up is, earlier, under consent agenda, there was two of the VAT cons, the sewer cleaners, that you approved, so thank you. Okay, so the next thing is, what have we done so far? Since the start of it, we awarded six hundred and fourteen million dollars in those three areas. That's an addition of, since we did the update six months ago, about a hundred and fifty-three million of that was done. A significant majority of that was one project at the wastewater treatment plant, and it has to do with our solids handling facility, and it's really sustainability and resiliency. You'll hear more coming in my quick presentation. It, the, the standard back then in the nineteen fifties and sixties, when it was built, you put the electrical equipment and gear below grade in a basement, so you don't see it. Well, with the recent hurricanes, you know, we barely made it through. We put up floodboards to try to stop it from overflowing, and we just barely did that. But what this project does is bring those equipment from below grade into new ones above the hundred-year floodplain. The other one that's part of that hundred and fifty-three million dollars new from six months ago is the new fleet facility at the wastewater plant. Next slide has to do with, wow, we did this in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, pre-inflation. I kept this slide the same. Most of the inflation is, is at the wastewater treatment plant. We actually saw very little high inflation where we fix our pipes, because it's really where you put the liner in. There's a lot of companies that do that. They're in and out quick, and it's just a labor function more than it is any kind of rotating equipment. But what we want to do is update our, our master plan at the treatment plant. And it's not the whole thing of population. We just want to say, here's what's left. Give us an updated cost for what's left to do at the plant, in the master plant. And really, the second thing is, new regulations. A lot of new regulations with forever chemicals and what you can do with your solids when you're done treating it. So we kind of want to look at those too, and we should make some progress by the time we come back to you in six months on that. So just want to highlight two, status of two projects. If you've been down Bay Shore and see a big green fence, that's the wastewater department. Real quick, eighteen million dollar project, same theme I talked about earlier. You have, they built in the nineteen fifties and sixties, you have built the station below grade. What this project does is put in a new building above grade, all the electric equipment, and it has a door, submarine tile-style door, so that we can close it when storms come. And it's on schedule, and I think two good things about this project. One, we really got ahead, I think, in the planning stage. We met with the tower residents there in the community and talked about, hey, this is what we're planning. Do you have any comments? And we did that right before construction. So I've heard very little complaints about this so far. Again, we're on schedule. Do want to mention one more thing about this. We had wastewater overflows in the Coachman area during the hurricanes. This will significantly help that, that flow, that overflow. I'm not gonna say it's gonna fix it, but it'll substantially do it while we work on other projects. Update my last project, same theme, eighty million dollar project at the wastewater treatment plant. This is where we remove the carbon from the wastewater. It really consists of seven large pumps in a, in the basement, and we're just about done. It's supposed to be done in December of twenty-six. We've built a new building to raise up all the electric equipment. That's the picture on the left. It's operational. And it has seven of these pumps. Three of them are online. A fourth is supposed to be online before the start of the rainy season, and then they'll finish up this fall. That concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to Rory to talk about the water department.
Rory Jones, Water Department. And if I could get the presentation, oh, it's there. Okay. So the original vision of our pipes program as it relates to water department, we had a healthy dose between, a healthy balance between treatment plant-related work and pipeline-related work. Sound like a broken record here, but the COVID in the construction market really had, uh, shift our priorities, reassess how we approached this. You know, even though the markets have changed, we've successfully awarded some of the most critical projects. the markets have changed, we've successfully awarded some of the most critical projects, especially those focused around the treatment plant facility. We've made deliberate decisions to prioritize the plant related work over pipeline, and that's really because of consequence of failure. It has a greater consequence of failure at the plant, regulatory compliance, and to meet long term capacity issues. I know, pipeline work is still happening, though. Due to cost escalations, we're advancing advancing a little more slowly and strategically. The deferred costs really, the cost escalations has had the impact. We're now deferring about eight years of pipeline. These are hard decisions, but necessary ones to ensure we're getting the most impact for for our money. The deferred projects aren't canceled, though. We will do these. We're just taking a little bit different, you know, approach with it. And I'll get into that in a little bit. Wanted to highlight at least a couple of the flagship projects. This is a fairly new picture representing our filter building improvements you approved recently. This is $150 million project that improves our water quality, system reliability, and adding 20 MGD capacity. It also gives us a way to service the existing filters, you know, during peak times. So, this is needed capacity for us. We're proud to say that we did exceed the EBO goal on this one with $31 million going to certified firms, even in a tough market. So, you can see really the yellow footprint of where this is going. And recently, we had the largest crane tower erected there at the base of that yellow, within the yellow basin there, that you might receive phone calls on. It is a safe distance from power poles and and, you know, other infrastructure around there. It's got a base that is designed to support that that tower crane. Another perspective here, looking towards the the west, you could see pipeline going into the middle. And because this was a design build project, we were able to perform some work associated with the chemical system improvements, lower right hand side. While they were opening up the roadways there, we put in some pipeline, ultimately saved us $750,000 to do it when the other crew was performing that other work. So, another benefit to the design build. Here's a, here's a general three dimensional perspective of it. The building on the left hand side is that new building. The building on the right hand side is our existing filters. New filters will be covered. They are a little bit deeper, more efficient, have higher capacity with less bays. Another perspective with the roof peeled off digitally here. Wanted to highlight their second project here is our water pump station. This pump station modernizes our intake system from the Hillsborough River, replacing pumps that date back to the original construction of the plant, almost 100 years old. This adds electrical redundancy and redundancy within the channels themselves. Gives us the ability to maintain service while taking out components. And and we're able to maintain and rehab facilities when necessary. This, this investment really includes, improves our raw water intake by increasing reliability and redundancy. So, you know, have a couple different perspectives here. You can see the new intake. It's going to be a completely new structure. Can kind of see an overhead view there of how it will protrude out into the Hillsborough River. Here is a quick plan view of the top of it. Each one of those channels will kind of take water in through automatic screens. Here's a side view of that. That that slanted piece of equipment there is that automatic screen that filters out any floatables or things that we get from the river. And once again, a three dimensional perspective of this as well. So, while we're deferring some large scale pipeline replacement projects, we're not standing still. We are still moving forward with pipeline work. As you guys know, we have amped up the use of our construction crew. They're, we're looking to add in more and more projects to their arsenal. You'll see some stuff in future agendas that we have to notify the public on larger scale projects, but they are helping to keep some of our costs down. We're also prioritizing critical valves, which allows us to isolate and minimize main breaks. We're going to focus on those. We're going to do some pipeline, and we'll eventually catch up. But the higher priority needs right now are the 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 treatment plant related projects. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have of us. I don't even, that was so comprehensive. I don't know, other than saying kudos to you. I mean, anybody have questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Captain Chairman. I just want to say thank you to both of Wastewater and Water because we got to be, some other cities and counties and states are very envious of what you guys are doing. And you and your whole team of employees that you have working there are way above being superior. But thank you all for what you've done.
You guys must walk around these conferences you go to like with your chest thrown out. I mean, like, like the quarterback on campus.
No, no, but maybe eventually, maybe eventually, but that's not my style.
Yeah. Councilman Hertak, you had something?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say thank you. I mean, you're always showing great presentations. And like I said, I earlier, I was just at the water department, and I'll probably come back to wastewater, too. It's been a while. So, like to see all the projects you're doing. And it's just really neat to see it going forward. And we're so lucky that this project started when it did and that we have this wonderful master plan. Even if we have to defer projects, it's really great to know that we have a plan. That is pretty much, that's, you can't do much without the plan. You're just, you're just filling gaps. And so I just wanted to say thank you to you both. You're doing great work with the with the money we have and look forward to seeing what happens in six more months.
Great. Thank you.
And normally, you sit here all day and you're here till like four o'clock to get to your presentation. So, there you go. You actually need to go for lunch.
On to work here.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming out today.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 41, and that was with Mr. Cotton or Ms. Feely. Are you on?
Yeah, they'll be on.
Okay.
There they are. There's Mr. Stone.
Mr. Cotton, I see you. Mr. Cotton, would you like to kick this off, item 41?
Good morning, councilmembers. Dennis Fernandez with Historic Preservation. I'll be presenting some slides dealing with Evora City parking lots under item number 41.
Sorry, I sorry, the screen was very small. We just assumed it was Cotton because the screen was so small. Now it's big and we can identify that it is you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you. If I could share my screen, please?
He's looking to screen, share a screen.
She's.
Oh, you do that down there? I thought they did that back there.
She's bulky talented.
Multi-talented. Well, I knew that. We're getting there.
Go.
We see your desktop. Yeah, we see your desktop. So, show us what you want to, show us what.
Okay, let me just move it over then. I'll give this one.
There you go.
Very good.
There we go. Council motion. We see that screen.
Okay. Just moving into, I'll go ahead and do it this way. It'll be a technical issue. Moving into the motion, they want to present on the ongoing effort in Evora City for parking lot compliance and some of the new processes that have been put in place with the code changes that occurred last October. This information below was provided by Mr. O'Connor. The code enforcement is conducting reoccurring inspections of the paid parking lots. Currently, all have been observed to be in compliance with the security requirements of the code. And I think that's consistent information from what he presented at the last update. In relation to the certificate of appropriateness process, which deals with the layout and appearance of the lots, back in 2024 April, about a year ago, we opened 24 enforcement cases on the 72 lots that exist in the historic district. Of those 24, 20 actually appeared before the code enforcement magistrate in July of last year. At that time, four were dismissed, and that was mainly because the owners presented information that they were not actively using those lots as principal parking lots. Sixteens were found to be in violation of the various sections under 27178. Those 16 in violation since then, seven have been issued certificates of appropriateness and completed the improvements and deemed to be compliant. Three have had BLC applications that are currently in review. Actually, since I did this PowerPoint, one of those has actually come into compliance as well. So, that number would be that eight are in compliance, two are currently in review, and six remain non-compliant. Those six that are non-compliant are being fined based on the magistrate's action on February the 5th. Part of the update in October to 27178 did require that operators of principal use parking lots submit an annual operation security plan. January 1st was the date for the first one that went into effect. Currently, there are 31 lots within the district that are required to complete the annual operation security plan. Given that this was a new code requirement towards the end of 2024, we did send out letters to the parking lot owners regarding this requirement. Since the January date, 18 reports have been received. 15 have been verified as being complete. Three still have some additional information that needs to be submitted. We're working with those owners who are engaged with us. 13 of the parking lots were issued citations in February for those that did not file the required report. As of March 18th, there was a pre hearing inspection done by our code compliance officer. 11 cases failed at that time. Two of the lots submitted affidavits that they were no longer going to use the lots for principal use parking. And so, we have upcoming actions within that enforcement process, both on May 26th where there'll be another final inspection prior to the June 4th hearing magistrate function. I just want to add that we are, you know, actively working with many of the operators to come into compliance. So, we're expecting in the next few weeks to have a more thorough number towards completion of our goal of having 100% compliance. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Councilman Hertak.
Uh, this was my motion. I just wanted to say thank you. It seems that slowly but surely, we're, we're getting there. So, the neighborhood has requested that this be maintained for at least one more report because they are saying the same thing, that it's not going as quickly. But so, yeah, I look forward to the next bi-monthly report, and I really appreciate your thoroughness.
And so, if things go well, we can anticipate that you remove it from the schedule.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's basically for the neighborhood. So, we'll see what, yeah.
Okay. Any other council questions with that? Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to item 42, our last agenda item. Abby Feely, there she is. Ms. Feely.
Good morning, council. Abby Feely, Administrator Development and Economic Opportunity. Just a quick update. Clarion associates myself or before you last month as part of our update. Couple of the council members indicated they would like a follow up with Clarion, and we're in the process of setting that up. In addition to that, the code writing, the first installment of the code writing will, is getting underway, and we are anticipating that coming at the end of summer. And I'll be meeting with the consultant beginning of next week, my regular meetings with them, just to go over a more detailed schedule of what we can anticipate with those installments. So, I'll have that for you at next month's update, and I'm available for any questions. I always appreciate the opportunity to give you a status update on where we are and keep you involved in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Feely. Any questions? Councilwoman Hertak.
I just wanted to say that I did speak to Ms. Feely and asked if she wanted to extend these a little bit because we're in that in between, and she asked to maintain them because it is the nice contact between us and her office and the public and letting us know what's happening during this critical time. So, I want to say thank you for that.
So, I guess then with that note, it devolves in your court. If you feel like we need to stretch it out some, let us know. Councilwoman Henderson.
No, just wanted to chime in and say thank you very much. I noticed you taking notes the last time that they were actually here and, you know, also making that recommendation that we follow up and speak to them, you know, and not just go off of our initial conversation. So, I really appreciate that. Looking forward to that. Do you know the possibility of the dates, timeframe that we can anticipate speaking with them again?
I believe that, Rosemary. My, my right hand will be reaching out to see, to your aides to see who's interested in having those meetings, and then we will get them on your calendars as they work for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feely. Enjoy your lunch.
Thank you. You, too.
You don't have to hang around all day waiting for us now. Okay, so that concludes our agenda items. We're ready for some new business. Councilman Miranda.
I have, I have some, sir.
You have no new business. Councilman Vera Vera.
Yes, sir. I don't have any. I wanted to update, oh, thank you, on, there was a staff report written on the Tampa fire on the records request that thankfully that has been resolved. And so, that's, that's great to hear. It goes without saying. I did want to update people very briefly on the hurricane funds because we've obviously gotten a lot of, a lot of calls and a lot of inquiries on it, which is a couple of things, which is that, you know, the $3.2 million people were able to sign up for it. No one has been rejected by it as of yet, except if you don't live in city limits. Then that's just a dispositive issue that disqualifies you from it, obviously. So, the, the cases are based upon right now income threshold. So, they're right now going to a certain income threshold, and then the higher you go, then you see what funds are going to be left over. So, that may very well happen. I did want to thank Abby Feely, who was just on right now, because her and her office and all the staff have just been amazing. On Tuesday, I think it was, I had two mediations, two cases I had to mediate, and we were getting all these calls. And Abby did a media availability event to answer people. And I, I couldn't do it just because I had private sector obligations. So, I really, you know, my hat is off to her. I think she does a wonderful, wonderful job. But there, there is concern. And by the way, these issues are outside of our hands because these funds were received from the state of Florida, and there are mandates with regards to income thresholds. So, there are concerns that a lot of people may not and ultimately be eligible. Again, we will find out about that. But again, that is something that we will have to look at with any additional assistance that we give because, again, you have a lot of people in throughout the city of Tampa who may very well be at risk of losing their homes. And we don't want that, especially for a lot of these blue collar working class communities that could see the cost of living go up with insurance and different things long term. And we want to make sure that we fight for them. And so, that's very, very important. But again, I did want to especially salute Abby because on Tuesday, I wish I could have been there. I wish I could have helped further. She really, she didn't step in. She just continued to lead. So, I, I appreciate that. So, I just wanted to update everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, the summer youth internship program within the city of Tampa, application process is being under, is underway right now where students can apply for summer jobs that last eight weeks, pays $15 an hour, will be in various departments within the city of Tampa. I myself will actually have someone working in my office this summer. There's 103 students that have filled out applications, and I just want to encourage the community, you know, to fill out the applications. Remember CRA, we moved that, that, we took away CRA funding from a summer youth employment program within East Tampa. A lot of people was upset about that, but this is the proper placement for it, and we're just encouraging them to apply. Also, I just want to say kudos to the NCAA for the community benefit project at Riverfront Recreation Center. The renovation's absolutely wonderful. Councilwoman Hertak and Clint Denon and myself was there. It was just a fun, quick time celebrating that ribbon cutting and, you know, just wonderful work that has enhanced the beautification of the rec center. Hashtag let the girls play or something like that, I think, is on the walls now. And then the other thing, I've given you all a document. And then the other thing, I've given you all a document, Mr. Carlson, I had Darlene email it to you so you could at least see it visually. This is really a revised motion regarding large-formative digital media in the Central Business District. I have had some time to reflect, and I want to be very thoughtful in my approach, you know, as a neophyte in this situation, so I would like to revisit my motion of Thursday, March 13, 2025, wherein I move for the downtown partnership to draft design standards and draft an ordinance for large-formative digital media in the Central Business District. And a couple of things. After consideration of my motion, I would like to amend the language, moving that in accordance with city processes, any modifications to the ordinance shall continue to be led by city staff in collaboration with the downtown partnership. I did not say that, and so it kind of got a buzz going within, everybody going, they can't write out ordinances, yes, but providing language and just being a supportive part of that. Also, given the specialized expertise and resources needed to support the development of the comprehensive design guidelines that should incorporate placemaking, artistic impact, and wayfinding, I'm going to move that motion next week because it is CRA about the partnership and the CRA to evaluate if funding matched to facilitate the draft language. The reason being is in the memo from Ms. Feeley, she did write Mr. Carlson's possible recommendation, oh, maybe we can use CRA funds, and so that kind of got a buzz going as well. But we have to do that with thoughtful intent, and I just want to make sure that that's clear as well. And then lastly, I would like to extend the timeframe. I know I asked, asked Councilwoman Hertek to move the actual salary discussion from May, and I would like to take that back to, move that, I mean, I asked you to move it to September. Let's put that back in May and then move this conversation for digital media back to September. So we're just flip-flopping those, flip-flopping those back.
Can I, yes, do you want to make these motions separately?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you all the foundations so that, you know, we can have a discussion. Sure.
I appreciate your clarifications, and I support all your motions.
Okay, thank you.
In a procedural, and I'll maybe get some help from Marty Shelby on this, so this, these motions were passed at a previous meeting that were closed, and now this is a, kind of a new motion, so I think it would be a, how do we want to do this?
I think she's making a motion to amend, and she's, and you set the date of what?
I did amend.
September 12th.
I'll restate it again, but it is amending the motion that I made recently.
Are you okay with it? The digital is going to be, is going to be amended to?
Okay, so the workshop was supposed to be in May, and I'm moving it to September, second.
So that we have a motion on the floor to move the workshop to September, what's the date?
September 25th.
September 25th, 2025.
And returning the salary discussion back to May.
Let's do it one at a time.
Yeah, but I just want to clarify.
And we have a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, ayes have it, I'm moving, okay? And then the salary?
Thank you, also.
I'd like to speak to that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I noticed, I noticed there are, there are eight workshops, actually now seven workshops on that date. I know Chairman Ascalco is, what?
September only has three.
May 22nd. If you're going to move something back to the May 22nd date, I just wanted to.
Where are we at right now in this discussion? So we just, we just moved the one to September, and now we talk about salary discussion.
So it goes from?
Leave it in September? Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to get your permission because I took it out of, you know, September, so. Appreciate it.
So we're going to leave that, we're going to leave that in September?
We'll leave that, yes, of course.
So that, now we go back to your original motion. I believe you want a motion to amend?
Yes.
Your previous motion?
To include the language that, moving that in accordance with city processes, any modifications to ordinances shall be led by city staff with the consideration from the downtown partnership.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Henderson to amend her previous motion to reflect the new language that she submitted to us. A second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, ayes have it.
Okay, and then, of course, just so you'll have it in your mind for next, the CRA meeting regarding the funding conversation, already talked with our city, our CRA attorney on that issue, and, you know, that'll come up next week.
So I think we have some homework assignments for bringing us for the CRA board for this next?
Correct, we got a couple of things, I think.
Okay, is that all of your new business?
That is it, thank you so much. Go, good luck to all of the teams in the final four.
Pick one of four, show your favorite.
Yes, yes, no, 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 I took a picture with some cheerleaders, but you'll have to go on my social media to see that.
I saw it. Councilwoman Hertek, you have new business?
No.
Councilman Carlson, new business?
Yeah, if I could real fast, the, there's suddenly been a dust-up in the neighborhood New Suburb Beautiful, which is just south of Parkland Estates. Someone has informed them that there's a possibility that the route of the South Howard Pipeline would go through the local streets like Georgia, so one of their alternatives is Morrison, but now they've been told by someone that it would go down Georgia. And there was a representative of Kimmons, apparently, who was at a meeting a couple nights ago. I'm going to be meeting with the neighborhood to find out exactly where all this is coming from, but they're going to start a campaign to tell us that we shouldn't allow this project to go through the local roads like Georgia. It still may go down Morrison or Swan or one of the kind of arterial roads, but they don't want it to go down the local road, similar to where we passed the motion to prevent it from going down Bristol. But if you all would be prepared to talk about it, I would, I would, I would make a motion to ask the stormwater staff to avoid the local roads in New Suburb Beautiful when planning the South Howard project. If you're not ready, we can talk about it another time, but, but it would prevent us from getting hundreds of emails.
I mean, Councilman Carlson, I would appreciate if we held that and have it, and maybe have that, because I think that's more of a comprehensive discussion, we want to have staff here for it too, because we could be, I don't know if we're just, if we're chasing ghosts, or, I mean, so would you mind holding that for a subsequent discussion?
Well, is there, I don't have the calendar in front of me. Is there a day that we could put that on, if anybody who has a calendar in front of them?
Yeah, I think, I think it's something coming up, I know there is.
Aren't they, they're coming to talk to us about this?
We're looking.
That calendar is serious, yeah.
Thank you.
It's thicker and thicker. I know there's something coming up, we've talked about it.
Yeah. I can't see it right now, but.
Is there a time that we could just get a quick, like, five-minute update on, like, the meeting after next, whenever the, the next regular meeting is?
Okay, let's dig.
That would be May 1st.
So, if, if there's room on the schedule, I would just make a motion to discuss the possibility of, of avoiding local roads in New Suburb Beautiful for the South Howard project. On May 1st.
When on April 17th.
I don't think there's room on April 17th. No, no, there is.
Yeah. No, I said April 17th would work, Councilman Carlson, so.
April 17th is a day you're going to be eight in June, and all is out.
Oh, that's why, okay, so that explains that, okay.
So, May 1st.
Never mind, May 1st, yeah. So you want to restate that for May 1st, Councilman Carlson?
Yes. Tuling, I don't know if you got it, but just to have that, have a discussion on May 1st as to the possibility of asking staff to avoid the local roads for the South Howard project. Local roads in New Suburb Beautiful for the South Howard project.
She's nodding her head that she's got it, so we have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Is there a second? Second from Councilman Miranda? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Anything else, Councilman Carlson?
Thank you, that's it. Thank you for allowing me.
Oh, no, we got more, we got, we, 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 we got two more. We've got Councilwoman Hertek has a change of heart, and then I have something.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Councilman Viera on his announcement.
Or condolences.
Or condolences. Say it.
Yeah, Councilman Viera filed for District 67 State House, Fentress Driscoll seat because she is term limited, so I just wanted to publicly congratulate you and condolence to you.
I'm not prime member, somebody asked me.
No, 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 no. So, just, that's why I said that she's leaving, so.
Actually, that was one of the things I was going to list off, but still, way to go steal my thunder, Councilwoman Hertek. You know, I want to acknowledge and express our grief for our chairperson, lost a dear grandparent this week, widow Maniscalco, and I know he's very sad about that, and the family's very close. A former councilman, John Dingfelder, lost his mother this past week, so, you know, and I know, I had privilege of meeting her many times. She was a wonderful lady, and my heart breaks for John on that one. One, the, as, as Councilwoman Henderson said, the Final Four Women's Sports, you know, Tampa's, Tampa's a grown-up sports town. We're, we are, we are rocking and rolling, and the fact that they love the city of Tampa, what did they say? This is the fourth time the Final Four, the Women's Final Four has been in Tampa, so you can look at that on April 6th and 7th, is that what it is? This weekend, yeah, coming up, so we, there'll be a lot of attention played to Tampa, and, you know, we've got baseball playing at Steinbrenner Field, Tampa Bay Rays playing, we've got the Lightning, you know, with the Lightning, we've got, we have got it all. So, congratulations to the city of Tampa. I do have one thing, and it was, it was brought to my attention that tomorrow, some of our folks from mobility is working with some neighbors about the sidewalk situation and race, and I thought it would might be, and we talked about this last week about our budget analysts, and I haven't spoken with her, so this is kind of inappropriate. Are you available tomorrow to attend that meeting if you're, if you were asked to be, to be available?
Take your calendar. What, what time is it?
Hey, Kapeski, City Council budget analyst, I just want to make sure, I think I was there to, the idea was that I would be there as another set of ears and eyes as we hear what's coming.
For council.
Right, as opposed to coming with any material to present.
No, just to be our eyes and ears.
Correct. Which would, which would absolutely be fine with me.
Okay. And you, you have the details on it?
I do, I do.
So is there any objection from Council to have her there as far as any?
She doesn't have permission to go, does she?
Well, I think we had some discussion in the last meeting about having a general understanding.
It'd be better for all of us to understand what's going on, instead of one giving it, she'd go crazy, if you seven of us are giving a direction, there's only one person there.
Yeah, so, okay, very good. So, I don't think that requires a motion, just, I just wanted to make sure that. And I want to say, this is the first time I've actually got an opportunity to share a whole meeting. Thank you guys for making it pleasant, and. When you're finished?
Motion received.
I'm finished, and there's a motion. No, I want to talk, I want to talk some more. It's my meeting, darn it. We have a motion receiving files in a second.
I had one quick motion.
Okay, Councilman Viera?
I apologize, yeah, I was speaking at Christ the King at their special needs ministry, and I promise I might do this, that I want to make a motion, if I may, for a September workshop on accessible housing for people with disabilities, so that we can speak on that in September, if I may.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I, and I wanted, if I may, I wanted to salute, I see Michael Gonzalez here, if you guys have never been, and obviously Charlie and many folks have, to the West Tampa Little League, it's feel the dreams over there, so.
Excellent, yeah. But where we, where we produce are major league players.
At least 70%.
We have a motion receiving file from Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Oh, my gosh, two Hall of Famers.